All right, we're going to get started here. 7:01. Welcome to the Tuesday, January 7th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Ann Arbor Planning Commission. For detailed information on meeting procedures, please review the full printed meeting agenda provided. Mr. Leonard, will you please call the roll?
It would be my pleasure. Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Weich?
Here.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt?
Here.
Commissioner Abrams? Commissioner Dish?
Here.
Commissioner Mills?
Here.
Commissioner Wetherby?
Here.
Commissioner Adams?
Here.
Commissioner Norton?
Here.
You have as many as you need.
All right, great. Thank you. All right, may I have a motion to approve the agenda? Moved by Commissioner Weich, seconded by Commissioner Mills. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 3rd, 2024 meeting? Moved by Commissioner Wetherby and seconded by Councilmember Dish. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Next up are reports to the Planning Commission and written communications. We will start with Councilmember Dish.
Thank you very much, Chair Lee. I'm delighted to report to you all that the alterations to fences were approved, as were the alterations to whatever we were calling them, bonuses or rebates for inclusion of affordable housing. And that's, that all happened last night. And I don't, I suppose there was a December meeting that I should update you about, but that is long gone.
Got it. Thank you. We'll go to Manager's Report.
That was so last year. There was also an amendment to the Development Agreement for 1140 Broadway. As part of, as part of the revised site plan for the Beekman on Broadway, they voluntarily offered six additional affordable units. Those were memorialized in a revised affordability agreement last evening as well. On the planning side, stay tuned. I am not Hank Kelly. And I believe that there is a chance that the working session may be canceled next week. So just stay tuned on your emails and we will confirm one way or another. I don't have anything teed up for that. But on the horizon, I do want to take this opportunity while I'm here. I'll be returning to see you on late January. One of the things is we're going to be bringing a couple of comprehensive plan questions that we really need some guidance from you and subsequently at a working session of the City Council before we get to drafting some segments of the plan. So I'm really looking forward to that conversation coming up as well.
Great, thank you. Do other commissioners, officers, or committee liaisons have anything to report? All right, seeing none, written communications are included in today's packet. Okay, so we're going to move on to public comment. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on issues not listed as a public hearing. We'll first hear from those present and then remote participants. To speak remotely, please press star nine. If on the phone, or use the raise hand feature in Zoom for phone access, please call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-66341226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of their phone number or by name for Zoom users. You'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak, and please move to a quiet area and mute any background noise so that we can hear you clearly. For all participants, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. Is there anyone who would like to, present that would like to speak at this time? Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you.
Of course.
My name is Larry Schmidt. I live at 8500 Fallingwater Drive, South Lyon, Michigan. I am the Chair of the Wolfpack Climate Action Team. For those of you not familiar, the Wolfpack is a network of about 130 people here in Ann Arbor, all environmentalists working on environmental projects. The Climate Action Team is taking on, just as it says, climate action. And we, for the past year, we've been working on building decarbonization and zero emission projects to try to get all buildings to be zero emission. There was some, we've been talking to a number of developers. We actually had a workshop last November. About 30 developers, local developers came and talked about this whole topic of building decarbonization. There was some concern at the meeting raised by some developers about DTE's capacity to service all electric buildings, especially if you start putting in car chargers and, you know, go with heat pumps and induction cooktops and all of that. So we decided to track that down and follow up and find out from DTE what the true situation was in terms of their capacity. And you'll be glad to know that after extensive discussions with them, it's clear that they do not have any capacity issues either in the generation or distribution of electricity. They are planning for an all-electric future. They, they provide a method of service document to any developer. And if some developer comes and says, well, DTE can't provide the capacity, then you really should ask them for the method of service letter that will state how DTE is going to serve their electric needs for all-electric buildings. They, the only issue is the building owner has to provide enough room for the transformers, necessary transformers in the building. They have to be designed so there's enough room for those transformers. So I'd like to advocate for the Planning Commission to really push for all-electric, to get rid of natural gas. Every residential unit, 1,000 square feet, if the, on natural gas emits about over a ton of CO2 into the atmosphere for its lifetime. So it's very essential that we, you know, move on this issue and encourage all, as developers are doing. Most developers are building all-electric buildings, which is a good thing. But DTE capacity issues are not an issue, is the point I'm making. So, thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? All right. Seeing none, do we have any remote callers, Mr. Leonard?
We have callers, but nobody indicating a desire to address the commission at this time.
Okay, just give it two, three seconds. Okay, thank you. We'll close the first public hearing comment. We are going to go to public hearings scheduled for the next business meeting. And so we'll go to staff for talking about non-conforming tax amendments. Mr. Leonard?
Yes, as indicated, we've got two items on the January 23rd agenda. Note, I believe that that's a Thursday agenda for, for some holiday adjustment for everybody. But we'll have two items. We'll have a returning item, which is alterations to our non-conforming language that was previously discussed at this table. And then second, the aforementioned discussion on some comprehensive plan policies.
Got it. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Number 8A, which is unfinished business, which there are none. That takes us to Agenda Number 9A. I'm going to introduce the item, Fiscal Year 2026 to 2031 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP. This fiscal year 2026 and 2031 CIP is a plan for city capital investments to be undertaken over the next six years. This plan describes projects at need, addresses needs for municipal and park facilities, transportation improvements, and utility infrastructure, along with proposed costs and scheduling. And we have Kayla Coleman, Capital Projects Asset Manager. Welcome.
Wonderful. Thank you for, thank you Chair and Commissioners for having me this evening. I'm Kayla Coleman, Capital Projects Asset Manager. Thank you for the introduction, Chair Lee. And so I'm going to share with you this evening a brief presentation for the benefit, this will be repeat information for many commissioners, but for the benefit of those who are new and for those following along, members of the public that may be interested and less familiar, we'll do a brief overview of what capital improvement planning is all about and what we're here reviewing this evening. So let me just get oriented with how I advance. Okay, looks like I can scroll. So the, what is capital improvement planning? So capital improvement planning is the plan we put together for all of our large physical infrastructure and assets. It's a six-year period of time that we plan for here in the city of Ann Arbor. And these are the physical improvements that serve the basic needs that are critical for this community to function. It is required by the state of Michigan that we prepare a capital improvements plan, and it is the statutory direction of the state of Michigan that the Planning Commission be the approving body of that plan. We complete the capital improvement cycle every year in the city of Ann Arbor, but it looks a little different in even years versus odd years. So this year is an even year, 2024. We did a full update to the whole six-year plan. We look at all six years. We do some rescoring, reprogramming of projects, looking very holistically. In the odd years, we do a modification that just addresses the first two years of the plan, at least primarily just the first two years. We can make some changes in the outer years as needed, but the focus on the two-year cycle is to align with the city's budget cycle, and it also makes it a more manageable process from a staffing perspective. So next year, you'll see sort of an abbreviated version of this. This year, we did the whole plan update. What am I talking about when I talk about physical infrastructure and assets? So these could be municipal facilities, if you think about things like fire stations, park facilities, utilities could include, include underground utilities, the water, sanitary and stormwater systems that are underneath the roads that we drive on and bike on. The water treatment and the water resource recovery facility are included in our utility projects. Transportation would include any pavement resurfacing, as well as sidewalk projects, bike corridor improvements, street lighting, and other transportation-related items. Other infrastructure is a new grouping of capital improvement planning projects. We found that we were sort of ending up with a catch-all of some miscellaneous things, some of the geothermal work from the Office of Sustainability, some art projects that the DDA was taking on. They didn't have a good fit in our neat three bubbles that we've existed with over the last couple of decades, so we added a new one this year. So other infrastructure is new, but any projects that take place in any of those areas that are over $100,000 that are addressing physical infrastructure and assets get programmed into our capital improvement plan. And also any study of more than $50,000 that is intended to lead to physical projects. So this does not include operations and maintenance. It does not include private development. Hopefully that gives you some better sense of what a capital project is. When we plan for capital improvements in the city of Ann Arbor, we follow this general flow of our order of operations. So first, we identify projects and scope them. So defining what is the work to be done, what are the needs of our community, what are the needs of our infrastructure and assets to maintain them in good working order, and to build as needed new assets to meet the needs of the future. We prioritize all of our needs based on strategic values, which we'll look at in a couple of slides further in the presentation. And then projects are programmed. So that schedule gets put together that shows over the next six years, when can we expect to see expenditures on each of these projects? That programming is considering the prioritization ranking results. It's looking at budget estimates, funding source, what is the funding availability and revenue forecast, what is staff capacity, and considering also project coordination. With all of that in mind, staff develop a capital improvement plan, as staff have done and are bringing it forward for you tonight. As the Planning Commission, the decision-maker and the approving body, it will be up to you to decide whether or not to approve this plan, as you consider whether it is aligned with existing planning documents and comprehensive planning work that the city is undertaking. What happens after the CIP is approved? It goes on to the capital budgeting process. So the budget is under City Council's domain. They are the authority over budget approval, and that is where dollars actually get allocated for work to happen. So to clarify, CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, is truly a plan. It is very typical that we see the projects identified in the capital improvement, improvement plan. They flow seamlessly into the capital budget, but that is a next step. Dollars do not get allocated through the capital improvement plan. I think it's important to understand that. So making sure we're all on the same page when we talk about fiscal years. So I'm presenting tonight the Capital Improvement Plan for Fiscal Years FY '26 through '31. What am I talking about? Fiscal year for the city of Ann Arbor spans from July 1st through June 30th of any given year. And so fiscal year '26, which is the first year of this planning cycle, starts on July 1st of 2025. So this summer, that will kick off the, the first year in this planning cycle. CIP versus capital budget. So while a CIP, Capital Improvement Plan, is a six-year plan, as I've said, the budget is a two-year budget. So City Council this spring would be presented with the budget for FY '26 and '27. But by city charter, City Council does approve just one year at a time. So they would approve that FY '26 budget and then come back again next year for the second one. So again, that's sort of why we do that modification in those odd years, and that aligns with how the budget moves through council as well. So a snapshot of the magnitude of this process. So we have over 30 meetings that take place. There are 11 different asset groups for the Capital Improvement Plan, and each of those groups has roughly three meetings. Some of them get condensed. There are some smaller asset groups with only a few projects. There's one asset group right now that has just one project in it, so we don't need three meetings to talk about that one. And then a couple of the asset groups will end up taking more than their planned three meetings. So it ends up being about three meetings, more than 75 hours of time split among those 30-plus meetings, and more than 50 staff that are involved. This is a organization-wide effort, putting together this capital improvement plan. So we do have staff from across the entire organization that participate, as well as external partners. The University of Michigan sends representatives to participate in the CIP. It helps to ensure alignment and coordination wherever possible, partnership opportunities as well. And we have, we've had participants from the Washtenaw County Water Resources Commissioner, Commissioner's Office. We've had participation in the past from the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority. So those are some of the ways, the breadth of the CIP planning is captured. It's typically the intense CIP planning time period is in the fall for the city. We do, we kind of kick off September right after Labor Day. September, October, November is our heavy planning period. And all of this is really working backwards from when does City Council need to approve the budget? When do we need to get started on the CIP update in order to have everything in place for handoff to get the budget prepared? This year, the CIP resulted in 510 projects. It's been a right around there, 500 or so, the last couple of years, and over $1 billion of funding that is needed in that six-year planning cycle window. There are 50 or more potential funding sources that we evaluate as we look for how we will fund each of the projects. So it's a pretty, fairly involved and comprehensive, comprehensive effort. So we want to make sure to illustrate all of that thought and effort that goes into preparing this. So I'm going to focus in, when I showed that timeline with sort of the key milestones along capital improvement timeline, I'm going to focus in on a couple of those. So identifying project needs, how, where do project needs come from? How do those get identified? There are many different sources. It could be from condition assessment. So an example is when we rate the pavement condition and we get what is called a Pazer score. That is the, the framework or system that's used for rating pavement condition. And so that helps identify where pavement's deteriorating and where investment is needed. There are also sitting, city planning documents that lead to newly identified projects. So for example, when the Moving Together Towards Vision Zero comprehensive, or Transportation Plan was developed, when the A20 Plan was approved, each, at each of those points, it led to new capital projects being put into the CIP. There's maintenance history that we look at, where are we seeing a lot of water main breaks, staff going out continuously, staff have particular knowledge of areas that have experienced problems. All of these are ways that we could lead to identifying a capital improvement need, community input, prioritize, other prioritization tools as well. Then, once all of those needs have been identified, they feed into the CIP and we score each one. So we score and prioritize all of our capital projects, thinking about how well the project achieves the community goals and staff recommendations, and how one project's expected value compares to another. Of course, we want to invest first in projects that will bring the greatest value to the community. So this is a sample of one of the strategic value scorecards. This is showing active transportation. You received some information about the scoring measures through a memo a couple of months ago. And as was discussed with this commission in April, staff did go through a very thorough process to update all of the scoring measures across the CIP this year. So that was a very big undertaking. It was at the request of this commission to focus in on equity and sustainability. So we worked closely with staff from the Office of Organizational Equity and staff from the Office of Sustainability to evaluate better ways to incorporate those concepts in the scoring and prioritization. We looked with sustainability in particular. We looked at all of the A20 strategies, and we looked to see where there were good fits within each of the asset groups. So for example, you'll see on here, enhanced mobility and reduced VMT is one of our strategic priorities for active transportation. And so this is blending both the enhanced mobility that we hear from the Moving Together Towards Vision Zero Plan, as well as the reduced vehicle miles traveled that you hear from the A20 Plan. These are very similar and overlapping concepts, and they're important. It's an important factor to drive decision-making for transportation. However, you'll see that its weight, 14%, while significant, certainly the most impactful measure for transportation is improving safety. That is the, the backbone of the whole Moving Together Towards Vision Zero Plan is safety, and that is the priority that first and foremost is being weighted for all of our active transportation efforts. So that's a sample. I won't go into, I won't bore you with any more detail on that, but I'm happy to answer questions. You did receive all the scoring measures a couple of months ago. All of the projects this year were rescored, with the exception of the Parks and Recreation Asset Group, who's going through a comprehensive asset management effort right now. So we set them aside so as not to duplicate the efforts that they are going through. Their project scorecards remained as is, but all other asset groups got kind of an overhaul, really. This is just going into more detail on how those weights are determined. I mentioned safety being weighted more heavily than mobility and VMT reduction, and that is not an arbitrarily developed percentage number. It comes out of this pairwise comparison process where we look at each of the measures in comparison to each other and do a relative magnitude comparison, and then the software calculates those percentages. So just some background on where that comes from. The other step of developing the scoring measures is to provide some definitions in, as a framework that staff will use when each project is scored. So you're seeing an example here. I know it's a lot of text on the screen, but you really don't need to read it in detail. It's just illustrating that for each of these priorities, such as improving safety, enhancing mobility, expanding connectivity, there are different steps along the continuum and definitions that provide sort of a guidepost for staff as we score projects. So we can look at what is the best fit for any particular project and find the right spot on the sliding scale to drop that, drop the slider bar on that project. And once we do that for all of our projects, it does produce a ranked order listing of all of the projects. So, quick recap on that CIP process shown in a slightly different way. We identify all of those projects. There'd be a variety of sources that those are developed from. We score and prioritize the project. It gives us that rank ordered listing. Then, there are other constraints. There's limited budget. We don't have endless resources to program an infinite number of projects in any given fiscal year. We have to look at how much money is actually available from different funding sources. We have to consider staff capacity, contractor capacity, and ultimately there becomes sort of a cutoff line where we can only do so much in a certain asset group per year. But there are other pressures as well, other external pressures. So project coordination is one. So the example that I'll use most often here, because I think it resonates with people, is that you will want to coordinate an underground utility project with a road resurfacing project to happen in the same year if you have identified both of those as a need in the system. So you wouldn't want to go through and resurface the pavement on a street and then come back in a couple of years and dig up that fresh pavement in order to replace a water main. So that's a sample, an example of how we think ahead to what are our needs across different utility groups, different asset groups, and how can we best coordinate so that we are efficient in the way resources are spent. Whenever we're looking at a specific geographic project extent, we want to group all of the work that is happening in that area in the same timeframe whenever possible to achieve those cost efficiencies. And then sometimes there are other competing policy priorities as well. And all of this can cause projects to shuffle and deviate from that nice, clean ranked order listing. And with all of that in mind, we develop the CIP. So it's not an exact science. There are the shuffling that happens. There's trying to find the best fit, trying to be as responsible as we can be with the resources available. Those are some of the things that are driving how that plan is developed. And one example that I'll speak to briefly, and we can discuss more in the Q and A if needed, there was a question that came in in advance of tonight's presentation about the Sunset Sidewalk Gap and where that falls in terms of how it scores in the sidewalk prioritization system as compared to where it's programmed in the CIP. And part of that, large part of that is the project coordination piece where that's, although there had been a sidewalk project programmed previously, and it was scheduled, I believe, for FY '27 or '28 in the last CIP cycle, this fall, as we looked at the Pazer ratings, the pavement condition, we saw that this is an area that is in need for street resurfacing. We also know that the water mains running along Sunset, heading straight to the water treatment plant, are also in need of attention. And there's a raw water alignment study that is happening currently that will better inform what the water main needs are. But we are anticipating to need a water main project in that area. We already know we need a street resurfacing project. And then we know that while we tried to, Steph had initiated a sidewalk project a number of years ago. We were asked to look more holistically at transportation improvements broadly, and we don't know whether that might include moving curb line or other impacts that are more resource intense and impactful to the pavement in that area. So that's an example kind of to hopefully solidify this concept of how competing priorities, how project coordination can come into play and cause a deviation from the ranked order listing, which might show one project as highest value or highest impact in a neighborhood. Okay, so happy to come back to that as we get into Q and A if that's helpful. Planning Commission role. So what are we here for tonight? Your role as the decision-maker for CIP approval is to consider whether or not the projects are aligned with existing plans and policies, and does the CIP help achieve the comprehensive planning efforts that are underway? And does the CIP help achieve the comprehensive planning efforts that are underway? So that's kind of the larger task at hand here. Some of the highlights, I've touched on some of these already, so try not to be too redundant here. But we talked already about updating scoring and prioritization ranking this year. Some of our other highlights this year were the speed management and multi-lane reconfiguration. There were a couple of council resolutions in 2023 that specifically directed that staff incorporate traffic calming elements into capital projects and also that road reconfiguration be evaluated for capital improvements. So on all of our projects that are impacting pavement surface, we have incorporated the speed management, traffic calming language to ensure that that gets considered at the time of implementation. That level of detail is typically not identified until the design phase of a project. But that is planned for there. The lane reconfiguration. There is also a new project in the CIP Multi-Lane Road Reconfiguration Feasibility Study that will better inform what we need to do to achieve the council direction on that item. Long-term planning for underground utilities. I thought this was worth highlighting as there are a couple of different comprehensive plans happening with our underground utilities. We have the sanitary system comprehensive plan that's looking at the needs of our sanitary system and what our capacity is to meet future growth, as well as the stormwater comprehensive plan that's really focusing on climate adaptation and resiliency planning. And then for our water, as I mentioned, there's a raw water main alignment study that's looking at how our source water gets to the plant, which is as well very important for climate adaptation. So those are a couple of the highlights. Let's see, water distribution, system replacement rates. So this was an effort that happened over the last year. We worked with a consultant to look at how is our investment in our underground water utility system aligning with what needs to happen to ensure that we don't get to a breaking point where literally the water mains are breaking at a rate that we cannot keep up with? How much do we need to be investing on an annual basis to stay ahead of that? And the planning and modeling that was completed indicated a budget of $29.4 to $40 million annually should be invested in water main replacements. We have an aging water infrastructure system. As we looked this year at what is currently planned in the CIP, it's about $27.5 million annually. So we are a little below what that target is, but we're not too far off relatively speaking. So I think it was just, it's worth making note. This will be something I think we focus on, staff focus on over the next couple of years to see how we can funnel more funding towards our water distribution system replacement. It's underground, so it tends to be a little bit out of sight, out of mind. But of course, it's a very important asset to ensure that we're maintaining a good condition. Stormwater management. We have a new policy this year for infiltration. There had been a policy previously that got updated and it has to do with the infiltration requirements when there are disturbances to the streets, so street reconstruction or significant utility work happening. This, again, it also supports our climate adaptation and resiliency planning that we're ensuring adequate stormwater management is planned for. And then pavement asset management. I wanted to note that we have existing pavement asset management goals that will sunset in 2026. So over the next year, we'll be reevaluating what those goals should be. And the good news is we have achieved many of the targets that were set for our pavement asset management goals. We've already achieved them and others were very close to that. But in the coming year, we'll be looking again at what the targets should be to, similar to the water distribution investment that I mentioned. What do we need to do to bring our pavement condition to a satisfactory level for this community? These highlights, I've covered some of them already. So as I said, the last two green bubbles here, the 510 total projects, over $1 billion in total project costs. And that 510 projects in total includes 128 that are completely new this year. And 68 were identified as being either complete this fiscal year or will be complete by June 30th. The 61 projects that were eliminated or placed on hold, this could be work that was identified as being no longer needed or things that need further study before they are appropriate to add back into the CIP. But that information is in more detail in your agenda packet, which projects specifically were put on hold and a brief statement about why. I'm realizing, I think time is probably running out. You've got a long night. So these slides will be available in your agenda materials. There's just a couple of graphics here. I've shared these similar graphics in the past that show how the funding is broken down. You see here, City on Buildings is the largest overall funding source, but really Housing Commission is the bulk of that. And then water is the next highest expenditure. Number of projects, water is the number one there. Stormwater management is second and streets right behind that. And then this is a breakdown of funding across different asset groups and kind of split up and what is needed over a six-year period versus the year one of the upcoming budget cycle and year two. But I don't expect you to be able to absorb all of that information this quickly. It will be available for your reference and it will be posted on the city's webpage as well. There's also a reminder just that the dashboard, the GIS dashboard is available, atugov.org/cipmap. If you had this hyperlink or bookmarked, you may want to refresh your bookmark. The URL does change each year whenever the map gets updated. So the short code is still the same, but you have to sometimes clear your cache in order to be able to use the short link to get to the updated webpage. So if you had any trouble with that, make sure to update your bookmark. And now, over to questions?
Yeah, actually, what we're going to do is go over to public hearing first and then yeah, we'll go to commission discussion. Thank you so much. Appreciate the overview. This is an opportunity. This is public hearing opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on this item. We'll first hear from those present and then those that are remote. To speak remotely, please press star nine. If on the phone, reuse the raise hand feature in Zoom. For phone access, please call 877-853-5247 and then enter the meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name for Zoom users. And you'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure that you're in a quiet area and please mute background noises. For all participants, again, please state your name and address at the beginning of your comments. With that, is there anyone present that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none. Do we have remote callers?
We do.
Great.
Caller with a phone number ending with 185, you can press star six to unmute and address the planning commission for up to three minutes. Caller with a phone number ending with 185, you can unmute by star six and address the planning commission for up to three minutes. Let's try to proceed to Adam Goodman. Adam Goodman, you have three minutes to address the planning commission. Hold on, Admin, Adam.
We can't hear the callers right now, so please hold for technical difficulties. Why don't we take a quick three-minute recess so that we, or a break so that we can address this and we'll come back to public comment in just a second? Thank you. Three minutes.
Mr. Goodman, are you there?
All right, we'll bring this back to order and let's hope that our technical difficulties have been fixed. We apologize for the delay. All right, remote caller participant, Mr. Goodman, is he still with us?
Mr. Goodman, can you address the planning commission now for three minutes?
Yeah, can you?
Woo, yes! Thank you for your patience, everybody.
Yeah, so this is Adam Goodman, 400 Virginia Avenue. First of all, thanks so much for all the hard work making sure that members of the public do have the chance to address me tonight. I'm speaking tonight to object to the proposal to remove the border-to-border trail underpasses at the intersection of Fuller Maiden Lane and the East Medical Center from the capital improvements plan. Those underpasses have been contemplated for decades and would create a connection that is a lynchpin in a countywide, a regional, and eventually a statewide non-motorized trail network. And I'll add that, in my experience, the intersection of Fuller and Maiden Lane, which people walking and biking have to traverse frequently to use this trail currently, is a pretty awful place to walk or bike. By far, it is the place in the city where I've come closest to getting run over by a driver on several occasions. So, you know, having an option where folks could bypass having to deal with the crosswalks there and the traffic would be very, very valuable. The city council has repeatedly recognized the importance of these connections. For example, in 2015 with R-15205, resolution to complete the central section of the border-to-border trail between Fuller and Riverside Parks, and also more recently in 2021 in one of the resolutions dealing with the East Medical Center Bridge widening project. Now, I do realize that funding for all these sorts of projects is constrained and the city has many other priorities for it. But as far as I see it, this is actually a reason we should continue to include these connections in our plans rather than removing them. The border-to-border trail presents some potentially unique funding opportunities. As you may be aware, there is a nonprofit organization called Huron Waterloo Pathways that has raised significant private funding towards completing other segments of the B2B trail. And, you know, what I've sort of heard informally from some of their board members is that they could be interested in working on this connection, but they're really waiting for the city to signal any interest of its own. And removing these projects from the CIP would do the exact opposite of that. So I'd ask that you, you know, by whatever means you can reconsider this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
Caller with the phone number ending with 1-85, you can press *6 to unmute your phone and address the planning commission. Caller with the phone number ending with 1-85, press *6 to unmute your phone if you would like to address the planning commission. There you go.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Yes, my name is Aaron Kaluskin. I have a question about the proposed development at 371 South Church Road.
We'll be getting to that public hearing a little bit later in the agenda. So if you want to stay tuned, we'll have another opportunity to address that petition.
Okay.
Stay tuned, not too far down the line.
Okay, thanks.
No other speakers indicated, surely.
Okay, all right, I'll give that to... Okay, with that, we will close public comment. Okay, I'm going to read the proposed motion. Whereas Section 1185 of the Ann Arbor City Code requires that the city planning commission annually prepare a CIP, Capital Improvements Plan, identifying public improvements that will be needed within the ensuing six years in the general order of priorities. Whereas the fiscal year 2026 through 2031, CIP has been drafted by the city asset category teams and reviewed by the city planning commission and resolved that the city planning commission hereby approves the fiscal 2026 through '31 Capital Improvements Plan and resolved that the city planning commission recommends that the city council approve the '26 through '31 Capital Improvements Plan as the basis for the fiscal year 2026/2027 capital budget moved by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Weiss. We are in discussion. Would anyone like to kick us off? Commissioner Adams?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank Ms. Coleman for her presentation and also for her comments clarifying the prioritization of the Sunset Road reconfiguration project for the rest of the commissioners. That's TRAT 2408 and TRAT 2410. I think the explanation for that prioritization makes sense. What I want to address with my comments is the September 2021 decision to couple the sidewalk gap project with, that had funding and designs and would have been completed two years ago, with the larger road reconfiguration of Sunset that's being discussed now in the plan. That's been delayed to beyond 2031 for lack of funding. The decision to couple those projects together, which was made administratively by staff after a significant amount of design work had been conducted, a significant amount of public engagement had been conducted. I think that decision's been enormously consequential for reasons I'll get into. But by way of background, there is no sidewalk at all on the north side of Sunset from Newport to Brooks. That terminates in Wines and Forsyte Schools. This was one of the first projects that staff identified for filling under the sidewalk millage. It was rated and is still rated as a high-priority project within the city's prioritization scheme, and it was originally scheduled to be built in 2022. In September 2021, staff announced that the Sunset portion of the project would be delayed in favor of this more ambitious, more holistic reconfiguration project for the road. That decision was made in response to resident feedback at an August 2021 public meeting, which I attended as a resident. I would characterize that feedback at that meeting as typical for new sidewalk projects on every street in the city. There were claims that the city sidewalk policy is wrong, that we don't need a sidewalk on every residential street. There were claims that the loss of trees and other foliage was somehow more important than the safety of the elementary school
I'm speaking tonight to object to the proposal to remove the border-to-border trail underpasses at the intersection of Fuller Maiden Lane and the East Medical Center from the capital improvements plan. Those underpasses have been contemplated for decades and would create a connection that is a lynchpin in a countywide, a regional, and eventually a statewide non-motorized trail network. And I'll add that, in my experience, the intersection of Fuller and Maiden Lane, which people walking and biking have to traverse frequently to use this trail currently, is a pretty awful place to walk or bike. It's by far, it is the place in the city where I've come closest to getting run over by a driver on several occasions. So, you know, having an option where folks could bypass having to deal with the crosswalks there and the traffic would be very, very valuable. The city council has repeatedly recognized the importance of these connections. For example, in 2015 with R-15205, resolution to complete the central section of the border-to-border trail between Fuller and Riverside Parks. And also back more recently in 2021, in one of the resolutions dealing with the East Medical Center Bridge widening project. Now, I do realize that funding for all these sorts of projects is constrained and the city has many other priorities for it. But as far as I see it, this is actually a reason we should continue to include these connections in our plans rather than removing them. The border-to-border trail presents some potentially unique funding opportunities. As you may be aware, there is a nonprofit organization called Huron Waterloo Pathways that has raised significant private funding towards completing other segments of the B2B trail. And, you know, what I've sort of heard informally from some of their board members is that they could be interested in working on this connection, but they're really waiting for the city to signal any interest of its own. And removing these projects from the CIP would do the exact opposite of that. So I'd ask that you, you know, by whatever means you can reconsider this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
Caller with the phone number ending with 1-85. You can press star six to unmute your phone and address the planning commission. Caller with the phone number ending with 1-85. Press star six to unmute your phone if you would like to address the planning commission. There you go.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
Yes, my name's Aaron Kaluskin. I have a question about the proposed development at 371 South Church Road.
We'll be getting to that public hearing a little bit later in the agenda. So if you want to stay tuned, we'll have another opportunity to address that petition.
Okay.
Stay tuned, not too far down the line.
Okay, thanks.
No other speakers indicated, surely.
Okay. All right, I'll give that to three more seconds. Okay, with that, we will close public comment. Okay, I'm going to read the proposed motion. Whereas Section 1185 of the Ann Arbor City Code requires that the city planning commission annually prepare a CIP, Capital Improvements Plan, identifying public improvements that will be needed within the ensuing six years in the general order of priorities. Whereas the fiscal year 2026 through 2031, CIP has been drafted by the city asset category teams and reviewed by the city planning commission and resolved that the city planning commission hereby approves the fiscal 2026 through 31 Capital Improvements Plan and resolved that the city planning commission recommends that the city council approve the 26 through 31 Capital Improvements Plan as the basis for the fiscal year 2026, 2027 capital budget moved by Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Weish. We are in discussion. Would anyone like to kick us off? Commissioner Adams?
Yeah. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Coleman for her presentation and also for her comments clarifying the prioritization of the Sunset Road reconfiguration project for the rest of the commissioners. That's TRAT 2408 and TRAT 2410. I think the explanation for that prioritization makes sense. What I want to address with my comments is the September 2021 decision to couple the sidewalk gap project with, that had funding and designs and would have been completed two years ago, with the larger road reconfiguration of Sunset that's being discussed now in the plan. That's been delayed to beyond 2031 for lack of funding. The decision to couple those projects together, which was made administratively by staff after a significant amount of design work had been conducted, a significant amount of public engagement had been conducted. I think that decision's been enormously consequential for reasons I'll get into. But by way of background, there is no sidewalk at all on the north side of Sunset from Newport to Brooks. That terminates in Wines and Forsyth Schools. This was one of the first projects that staff identified for filling under the sidewalk millage. It is, it was rated and is still rated as a high priority project within the city's prioritization scheme. And it was originally scheduled to be built in 2022. In September 2021, staff announced that the Sunset portion of the project would be delayed in favor of this more ambitious, more holistic reconsider, reconfiguration project for the road. That decision was made in response to resident feedback at an August 2021 public meeting, which I attended as a resident. I would characterize that feedback at that meeting as typical for new sidewalk projects on every street in the city. There were claims that the city sidewalk policy is wrong, that we don't need a sidewalk on every residential street. There were claims that the loss of trees and other, you know, foliage was somehow more important than the safety of the elementary school students walking to and from school on that street, things like that. I bring that up to point out that there was nothing about that feedback at that meeting that would justify the carving out of this street from citywide transportation safety policy. And nothing that would, in my view, justify delaying a sidewalk gap project that was supposed to be filled two years ago all the way out to 2031 as currently contemplated. When this decision was made, I feared that we were delaying this shovel-ready, fully-funded project in favor of an ambitious but completely unfunded and unplanned project that would never get built. And acknowledging that that decision, I think, was made with the best possible intentions, I think we have to acknowledge today that it failed. Because by coupling these two projects together, we have done exactly what I feared we would do. We have delayed the filling of the sidewalk gap project indefinitely. 2031 to me is indefinitely. The prior plan budgeted $2 million for this reconfiguration project on Sunset in fiscal years 28 and 29. This draft delays the project on some unspecified date beyond 2031. Any student at Wines or Forsyth who happens to live on the north side of the road is going to have to cross that street that is heavily utilized by hospital commuters every single day to get to a sidewalk. That sidewalk has no buffer for significant stretches, right? It was built, I guess, to, in that manner, to avoid cutting down trees, which is the same objection we heard on the other side of the street. So now that sidewalk isn't appropriately safe. It's the only sidewalk on the street. If you're a kindergartner in 2023, you will be in Skyline before this thing is built. That is unacceptable. I think this is really significant. There is no, there has been no change to the city's scoring of the sidewalk. The Sunset to Brooks section of the project was and is scored as high priority, 4.72 and 4.48 in the city's prioritization calculator. That's higher than several other projects that will receive funding in the upcoming fiscal years under this draft CIP. The second fact I want to point out here, we have design, we have shovel-ready designs that the city's already paid for. Some, like $30,000 or $40,000 worth of funding has already gone into designing a project that we're not building. Wade Trim, and as of October 21, Wade Trim billed the city roughly $90,000 for the joint Newport-Sunset project. So half of that figure, we've more or less left on the table. We could pick it up right now just by saying, we're going to take this project that we've now backburnered forever and move it forward. Finally, and this is a point I think worth emphasizing. This specific delayed project has, in a not insignificant way, undermined one of the core political objectives of the sidewalk millage, which was to reduce the amount of political blowback we get when we build sidewalk projects by delaying this project. This is brought up at almost every meeting that I've attended relating to a new sidewalk project. The fact that this happened, it has mobilized people to oppose sidewalk projects the same way they did before. And I think that we do ourselves a service here and we advance city policy objectives by reversing that decision, re-racking this project, building it as we originally intended and as staff said we should do. I agree that we should. And I think the CIP needs to be revised to move this thing forward.
Okay. Thank you. Just as a follow-up from that, from a procedural standpoint, my understanding is that this is... What does the modification look like?
I'm just going to vote no. So my plan is to vote no on this, this, like, this has to be addressed. That's my intention.
Understood. This is a question for staff. Procedurally speaking, what does the modification look like, if we are?
So, it's a good question. It doesn't happen a lot because, as you see, we go through a pretty robust process on projects such, including this one, about why it ends up where it is. But this is your document. You have the agency to say, that scoring process that's been presented is inadequate for this particular project and we, I think that this particular project should be elevated. That just be, keep in mind, that's going to have consequences because we're presenting a fully thought-out plan that is not only considering the scoring evaluation, but the financing available. So it is fully within the planning commission's purview right now to say, we think that that sidewalk should be decoupled from all of the other aspects of this that was explained. You know, despite road improvement needs, water main needs, the like, we think that's a worthwhile priority that should happen independent of knowing the answers to those things and therefore it should be elevated. You could modify that at the table. That's going to result in the adopted plan that's both published and presented to city council, inserting that into the priority, wherever you think that that is appropriate. Alternatively, you could say, we would like to see more examples if we, if we bring that forward independent of those other aspects. We could also spend the time doing the analysis about what impact that is going to have to other budgets, other projects, and what would then potentially fall out if that is being elevated more quickly because that plan has to be somewhat resource-constrained.
Okay.
There's two reasons why I don't want to make a motion at the table. The first reason is the decoupling and the scoring of the project independently hasn't been done, right? It was done originally and there is a score for it. But what I don't know is that there are other projects in the plan that have scoring and I don't know, and different levels of funding. And the funding levels are unclear to me and also where it would fall within that ranking is also unclear. So I don't want to step on staff's prerogative here to say where it falls, and I would have to in order to make a motion. So what I, but what I do want to do is I want to decouple it. I want to reverse that decision and I want it re-racked in the order that it should be in, given that it was right out of the gate in the second tranche of projects that was supposed to be completed and was not.
Thank you. Ms. Coleman?
If I may?
Yeah, of course, please.
So I believe the Sunset-Brooks to Newport sidewalk project that you're referring to that had been pursued in 2021 then, and in 2022, was planned for construction. That one was eliminated, and I just want to clarify for the history of what had happened. In 2021, that fall, that project was eliminated from the CIP. And in 2022, the transportation, Sunset Transportation Corridor project was added. So just to clarify and referencing of like, of coupling them, the transportation improvement project was born out of the community feedback and the political pressure to not pursue the sidewalk, standalone sidewalk project. So what we would be doing, I think, is reverting to a sidewalk project rather than maintaining a transportation. I guess maybe that's a question, is to clarify whether, when you reference it as decoupling, that seems to imply it would be two separate projects and it was actually that one replaced the other?
My proposal is to decouple them, so separate them. And if there's a staff or council desire to retain the Sunset reconfiguration project as a standalone project with its own separate funding source and its own line item in the CIP for beyond 2031 or wherever it's scheduled, that's fine. But the Sunset, the Sunset Newport to Brooks sidewalk gap project is, in my mind, should be a standalone project as it was originally planned because coupling it to the reconfiguration has caused it to be delayed in a manner not originally envisioned by council or staff or anybody.
Right. Okay, I think that that helps to clarify. Let me see if there was something else in terms of, oh, I think to just build on what Brett had shared in regard to how the CIP is put together, looking holistically at the millage dollars that are available for sidewalk projects. So if we were, if the Sunset sidewalk project were to be brought back, it had been eliminated in 2021. If it were recreated, then that would displace funding for some other projects. So I think it's important, I just want to emphasize that we all understand trade-offs because sometimes there's requests for items that are not funded and there will not be any new dollars that become available as a result. That kind of ties into, as I emphasize, this is a plan, this does not allocate dollars. Naming it a CIP project doesn't, as you know, create new money.
I understand that. My, and if, and part of the reason I don't want to make a motion to modify the plan again is because it's entirely possible you may come back and say, we looked at it as a standalone project and for these three reasons, it is not higher priority than anything in the queue for 2026 through 2029, so therefore it's here. And that would be fine. The reason I'm skeptical that that's true is that I believe that staff had good reasons for putting it at the front of the line. And I don't believe anything has changed. So I tend to think that the decision that was made administratively in September of 21, I think implicitly assumed that we would find a way to get funding to do a broader reconfiguration at some reasonable timeline. That assumption has collapsed, I think, and is no longer the case. The fact that the current draft in front of us tonight has this project out beyond 2031 tells me that it's not going to be built on any reasonable timeline. That's too long. So for a project that we wanted to build in 2022, 2023, that's too far to wait. Like, it's going to end up being 10 years.
Ms. Coleman, if you could give us an understanding of what the 2031 bucket symbolizes. Is it just a?
It is, yeah. It truly is beyond 2031. It is not meant to be 2032. We don't know. These are projects that, and that's something that I think is important for everyone to understand because I think there's been community expectations or understanding in the past that if they see it in that beyond year, that that means it's coming right up next. That doesn't necessarily mean that's true. And I can't say for Sunset, maybe it is 2032, or maybe it's not. But in general, that, those are projects that we have not looked at funding availability for yet. It's outside of our six-year window. So we just don't know. It could be 2032, it could be 2042, like I...
Gotcha.
We don't know. I wouldn't want to, like, persuade you either way, you know?
Sure, sure.
But I do think something to keep in mind as we talk about whether or not that sidewalk project should be brought back as is, it was attempted. It was not supported. I don't know. I think it's worth reflecting on whether or not the outcome would be any different because I completely understand what Commissioner Adams is saying in regard to what the intent of the millage is and how that ranked in the system. But ultimately, for all of those reasons, the community pushback...
I totally, I could not disagree with that more. So 30 people showed up at a meeting and squawked about tree loss? That can't be a basis to decline to build sidewalks in the city. It can't be, or else we shouldn't have the millage in place. We should just tax, we should just assess homeowners again. That really cannot work. And the fact that it did, it shouldn't surprise us that at the Brooks sidewalk public meeting, it got brought up. And I know that the neighbors who live on Brooks talked to the neighbors who live on Sunset and they swapped notes. So we have amplified the political pushback on these projects and made it harder to build them. I mean, this was a seriously consequential decision that we made and we need to reconsider it.
Got it. So do we have other commissioners, council members that like to, Councilmember Dish?
So I just, I want to make two points. So I want to clarify, you're asking for either an actual or a hypothetical. If you ranked this, if you took this project as if it were simply the sidewalk project that it was and compared it to the other things that are in the queue now, where would it rank?
Yep.
And then you would want to go somewhere from there, but that's the first thing that you're asking for.
Yep.
And in terms of the question of, it was not supported at the time. It was not supported publicly, but I was at a meeting three weeks ago, or not three weeks, three months, it seems like 150 years ago, along Barton, right? And that sidewalk is not supported either, but it's going to go through and I want it to go through. And these are my constituents who don't want it and will be angry with me because I'm, I'm sorry, but this is going to happen. There were certainly 25 people there and they have been advocating for four years to not have that sidewalk happen. It's the one that's opposite the wooden path along, you know where it is. So I don't think that, I worry that when we, in some instances, allow public opposition to stop a sidewalk, in other places we don't. And these are the same arguments, these are the same arguments that we heard a few weeks ago on council about the trees and, you know, there's a sidewalk on the other side, so why do we need it here? So, you know, they, it is a suite of arguments. And if we are going to be not swayed by them in some places, we should be not swayed by them in other places. And this one on Sunset is really crucial. I mean, there are blind curves. It's nasty to have to be a pedestrian along there.
Got it. Thank you, Councilmember Dish. Do we have other commissioners? Commissioner Weish and then Mr. Leonard?
I just want to stay here because you're not making a motion to amend the CIP. Then our only option would be to just accept it as it is or vote against it.
You can support it, reject it, or postpone action until you get some other additional information that you find necessary to make that decision.
If I can, address Ms. Coleman. What does that do for you if a majority of us vote against the document for this or for the reason that the underpass, the bike underpass has been removed from the CIP or deferred indefinitely? I know it hasn't happened.
Yeah, so a little bit of the unprospective territory here, at least in my time doing, my brief time doing the CIP, but even my predecessor, I think, had not experienced this. So I think that part of the timeline, again, with getting the CIP approval is in order to hand it off for capital budgeting and to stay on track. Yes, it seems like March or May or April or May or whenever council will consider, the budget seems so far away, but there's a lot of work that needs to happen between now and then to get the budget prepared. So I think the time delays become a concern in that respect. So there is some urgency to this. However, I cannot say that it has to be approved tonight or else we won't have a budget in April. Like, I would imagine there is opportunity to do revisions if needed. It is up to this board, this commission, to decide whether or not you approve. And if more time is needed, then I think that is what we will work with. And I do think, so the Sunset project, reviving that old project and scoring it, I think, seems reasonable. I don't think that that's an insurmountable task. We can talk a little more about the other two projects that were mentioned.
He started with the sidewalk. I was going to talk about the underpass.
Do you realize that just yet? But yeah, I'll let Mr. Leonard address this.
If I could just stay here for a minute because I think there are real consequences, right? Because I've been here enough and have heard from you enough that you have some 500 meetings a year to do this. And I want to both acknowledge my colleague's concern, but also recognize that you have a significant work effort. So if we vote it down today and that creates a cascade, I think it's helpful for us just to understand what that looks like. Or if you can inform us, what would be a helpful communication to you? So I think you understand what Commissioner Adams is asking for and you seem to be amenable to that. If, for instance, we were to talk about the underpass as a similar thing because it came up in the expansion of that damn bridge and now it's being removed from the CIP altogether, that, for me, is another one of those places where I've sat at the table to say, what really is our role? Are we just here to rubber stamp what you have done? Or do we actually have agency to say, we care about these things? We care about how our city is being planned and these things have demonstrative impact on human lives? The kids on Sunset and myself as a biker who bikes through that intersection, like the caller, Mr. Adams, I was almost killed at that intersection. There was somebody coming down Fuller flying. I hit, I was at the intersection. They didn't see that the traffic had stopped and they smashed into the car that had stopped. And had I entered the intersection when the car stopped to allow me to go, I would not be here at the table. So these are not like hypotheticals and we're certainly not trying to make your work hard. But I want to stay alive and I want others in our community to stay alive. And so to see these things pulled from our planning, especially as we're doing comprehensive planning right now, it just feels like we're at cross purposes. And so I appreciate the opportunity to do this, but I also don't want to be unnecessarily difficult in the work that you've been asked to do by the city. So it's really helpful for us to get a real good sense of like, is this our document? Or are we just supposed to pass this to the next body?
Yeah, it's your document. You don't have agency to decide to hire a designer and to put the money into building an underpass or a sidewalk. But you do have agency to say that the city should do that. you do have agency to say that the city should do that. And then it's up to council to decide if your balancing of multiple city priorities is done well, or if they want to deviate from that. So I want to be clear, like, this is your document. This is your voice. And we are here, Kayla and many people across the city are doing incredible work to try to present to you a very balanced, thoughtful, and I want to be clear, safety is part of it. I'm not, not to dispute that that project doesn't have safety, but safety is something that we look at in trying to decide a wide variety of investments. So, I do want to, I just do want to alert that it's not just the application of that project and your experience there. That is an important factor that we're considering across the board in a lot of methods about prioritizing projects. And is, and to the extent of what the message is to this plan, should it not be supported tonight, or amendments require, to Commissioner Adams' questions, I think, I was not at that meeting, but I think part of that is the messy community building process. And that's, that's how we got here. But one message that could go back to me and Kayla in presenting and drafting the next capital improvements plan is, we don't want sidewalks to be part of that efficiency equation. Like, in this case, frankly, that was sort of a convenient way for somebody to say, let's think about a more holistic transportation. What you're saying here now is, perhaps we don't want to couple it with a water main improvement and transportation improvements. And so if sidewalk improvements are paramount to us, to a greater extent maybe than financial efficiency and able to get the most bang for our buck. And again, I know that there are other aspects to this project than that, so I don't want to say that's the whole thing. But that could be a message that you give to us so that the next time we're working on scoring, we are mindful of that, that we will not consider that as a primary role as safety, as gap filling for sidewalks going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Mr. Norton?
So I'm totally impressed with the work that you clearly have done to pull this plan together, but I think you hit a hot button issue because I too have almost been hit multiple times. It mean, at the, at the hospital, sorry. And I think there are others here who have almost been hit. And I bike a fair bit of the city, and that's like one of the most dangerous intersections I have to get through. So I'm a little bit perplexed how, if safety is a major concern, how that's dropping off the table. So, could you just explain that a little bit? How did that fall off the table?
I can speak a little bit about the projects that were mentioned. I believe it was the border-to-border trail Fuller Maiden Lane, and then non-motorized connection under East Medical Center Drive along South Side of Fuller. Those are the CIP projects.
I'm thinking the intersection, I understood there was going to be an underpass put in so that you didn't have to try and cross Maiden Lane.
These are two projects that have existed in the CIP, one of them since 2014 and one of them since 2016. So they are longstanding projects. What was proposed in this CIP cycle was placing them on hold, not eliminating them. It's a slight difference. I realize that it may still result in the same reaction and concern. But part of placing more projects on hold is trying to clarify what is actually a six, in a six-year plan, and how we utilize that beyond column. So we can keep these in the CIP as they have been over the last 10-plus years for one of the projects and eight years for the other one. We can keep them in the beyond column. My concern from a CIP management perspective is it's confusing to the public when they keep seeing the can kicked down the road. And so what I am asking staff as we go through the planning process is when I see these projects that keep just out and out and out, to have an honest conversation. Are we going to do this in the next six years or not? Or in the next eight to 10 years even? Like, does it seem likely? And if the answer is we don't know or not likely, then we're moving more and more projects to on hold so that we have a more realistic look at what will be completed in the planning window. But why is it not going to be done in the next six years maybe is the next question. And a lot of that, the answer that I got from staff, a lot is about alignment with the, moving together towards Vision Zero Transportation Plan. While safety certainly aligns, the areas that were called out as priority focus areas, or the corridors that needed investment, these projects were not highlighted in that plan as a focus area. So in order to stay aligned, that's a primary role of the CIP is to align with our other planning documents. In order to stay aligned, the suggestion was to put these on hold and pursue the transportation work that is specifically called out in that plan. I think that this one is very achievable if you were to make a motion today to approve the CIP, but keep those two projects in the beyond 2031 column instead of on hold. That is a very simple change administratively to take care of, and then they could be reevaluated in the next CIP cycle to see if they should be programmed.
Yeah, but I'm fairly new to the planning commission, so please bear with me. What the other plan that they're not aligned with, can you explain that to me a little bit?
The Vision Zero Transportation Plan is the city's comprehensive transportation plan. It was completed, it's either approved around 2021...
Adopted by the Planning Commission and City Council in 2021.
And it didn't include those intersections as safety concerns?
It identified some priority intersections and corridors. It did not identify that as a non-motorized priority safety concern.
Wow, okay.
And there was robust community engagement process that went into that. It was a robust technical advisory committee, community advisory committee. And so in looking at that plan specifically, those were not reflected as projects that were called out for attention. Does it still align, like, the safety components? I think certainly do align. If you think of safety broadly, Vision Zero is all about transportation safety and reducing serious injuries and fatalities from transportation impacts. So I think that you can make a case that it is aligned, and I think that would be, that, in my slides, when I show the bubbles of, like, what is your role and what are the things you should focus on, alignment with existing planning documents is a key role of this commission. And so I think if you view that transportation plan as supportive of these projects, that's a fair interpretation and point to make.
Yeah, so I understand that, you know, looking systematically at everything that's going on simultaneously and the value of doing that, I'm just kind of flabbergasted that those weren't identified as safety concerned intersections. They're so dangerous. People coming down out of the hospital are not looking for pedestrians. They're so dangerous. How did they not appear as a safety concern? So I don't want to derail this anymore. I kind of want to figure out what's the most productive way forward.
Yeah. I think that's a, that's a fair point. I want to pick up on that thread because, so I'm hearing obviously concerns about the Sunset sidewalk gap, the way that it was kind of lumped together with the holistic plan, and then we are also hearing about underpass. So, the way I see it right now, there's kind of like four actions we could take, right? There's an approval as-is, there is a denial, straight-up denial. There is a third option is postponement, or the fourth one would be an approval with modifications to it because we do have a, you know, whereas clause. And so it would be possible to say, hey, we want to insert a modification with a whereas for staff to take a look at prior to city council, to take a look at the reprioritization and the decoupling of Sunset as well as that. So, there is that. And the next thing that I do want to talk about is that Ms. Coleman did come to us in November, right? So like, the whole idea is we actually introduced a meeting prior to this one to talk about, hey, can we have more productive conversations about modifications that we could make before you're here for the approval portion of it? And so I want to kind of look at that process as well and just have a meaningful conversation just regarding the fact that it would be great to get a lot of this kind of baked out so that this is an easier conversation. Sometimes, you know, we don't get that kind of final product. The, so there's the four things, the four options right now, and I do want to hear from you on kind of like that, the approval, denial, postponement, or approval with modification. And then to talk about how we can make that other meeting the, kind of the precursor to this one, a little bit more engaging and productive from, like, a feedback standpoint. And maybe that is, you know, hey, we need to drive a little bit more, all the information that we got this week, try to get us as much of that in the September, October. And then the, yeah, so taking a look at how we can make that engaging. Let's talk about the action item we have in front of us.
If I can just correct the record for the, this year I did not come in November. I just wanted to clarify.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
I came in April when we talked about the scoring measure update, and then we provided a written communication. I think that went in September, maybe, or October?
September.
The CIP process this year with rescoring all 510 projects on the new measures was more time-intensive even than it typically is, so it didn't provide an opportunity to come back sooner.
Gotcha.
But yes, I think talking process and how we can be most effective for future cycles, I would very much welcome that.
Yes, and I think that's something that we definitely have, and it doesn't have to be decided, like, right here at this meeting, but that needs to be looked at. Commissioner Adams, I know you wanted to give feedback on that approval with modifications. I think that's something that you, it doesn't sound like you're in favor of. Give us some...
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather go with a postponement to give staff an opportunity to look at the two issues that we've identified, rather than, again, rather than purport to know right now where my issue, how it should be resolved. Because again, I don't know how the project gets scored relative to the other projects given funding constraints. Similarly, I don't know what the best solution is to the underpass, the issues with the, with the infrastructure that the other commissioners have raised.
Okay.
And I'd like to give staff a meaningful opportunity to look at those creatively and come back to the table with a brief, hopefully minor revisions to the plan that address that feedback.
Okay, gotcha, understood. And practically speaking, we're back January 23rd for a full meeting, right? But Commissioner Mills, you wanted to add some?
Not on this thing. I've got other questions.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so it sounds like, it sounds like there are some concerns as to saying, hey, we may be moving hastily. We want to give staff a little more time to consider the things that we brought up. So thank you for that feedback. Any other comments just regarding current action items, process forward? Commissioner Mills?
Okay, so this is not about, I am cool with that. Thank you for clarifying what, like, the on-hold things. And first of all, the idea that we have a document that shows what's been accomplished, what's been eliminated, and the reason why, and what's been put on hold, I appreciate that transparency, like immensely. And I, I think if we think about over time, most of the stuff that we talk about here tends to be the projects that either always linger in beyond, in that final category, or things that, like, where did that get lost? We've talked about it a lot. And so I, I think that if we were to think about changing process to pull things forward or earlier, before, before January, I think that if we have a list of those things that are being contemplated for on-hold or eliminated, that would probably, I think that that would help us identify, or the things that you are flagging as, like, here's the things that's yet again going to be in the beyond category. So that's one. I have ranted about my new commute to North Campus and how unsafe that intersection is, and it is in my email to write a letter to City Hall to say, I see, like, that intersection is so dangerous, and it is in moving in the Vision Zero. It's on page 72. And so I'm not sure, it's not, it doesn't specifically talk about a bridge, but at major intersections, this is talking about physically separating bicyclists and motor vehicles up until the intersection. The very first one that is mentioned is Fuller Road and Maiden Lane. So I'm curi, like, I'm, I was like, how did we miss this? I don't think we did. It's in there. It's not, it doesn't talk about a bridge.
Maybe that was what...
And so maybe that's what it is. If there's not something else planned, I mean, that it, I was like, a lot. I think that that is the most dangerous intersection as a cyclist in this entire city. There's others. There's other places where I've almost been killed, but it is crazy. And so I'm going to strongly advocate in, when we see this, for bringing those back in because I, I don't know what happens. And actually, this is, I never remember, I remember the eliminated, and I remember the, like, we've done it, you know, achieved so we can take it off. What happens to the hold ones? Like, how do you consider that in? And it seemed to me that there were five, we've talked about the two, but there were five that were listed in as on hold because we don't have funding in the next six years. And so at least for those, again, I don't have a pony in the game on the other ones. But like, I'm curious about why those couldn't just stay for more time in the beyond.
No, I think the two projects that we're...
Or all, there were, of the ones, of the multiple things that were on hold, and I can't remember how many enumerated were on hold, five of them. The specific comment was unlikely to get funding for the next six years. I just, you know, I can, I can tell you which ones they are. But there's other reasons that other things get put on hold.
Yeah.
But, but for that specific reason, I'm curious about that. And again, maybe walking us through, how new is hold, or like, what's the process when the next, next year's process starts?
May I answer? So, a couple of quick responses on that. On-hold projects do get reevaluated each CIP cycle. We, so that is a project status in our software. So we're able to filter to say, okay, show us everything that's on hold. And then we can review those and look, should any of these be taken off of hold? Have any of these that have been on hold lingered on hold long enough that we should consider eliminating them? So that is part of the process. How long has on-hold been used? I'm not sure whether my predecessor had been using, and I've been in this role now for three, almost three years. So it may be that it wasn't previously used. I think that allowing projects to remain in the CIP, if they're not likely to happen in the six-year window, certainly open to that. I think right now we are kind of like bridging both because some projects are in there that aren't likely to have funding in six years, and they're just in the beyond category, and then some are put on hold. And I was working us more towards putting them on hold so that we have a realistic six-year plan. And then, one of the things we talked about this year, and it's not part of this cycle, but for future cycles, is to actually provide a list with your packet as well of, here is the complete list of on-hold projects. Because right now you're seeing which ones were placed on hold this year, but you're not seeing a comprehensive list of everything that's on hold, which I think would be a helpful improvement. But if your feedback is, I mean, a lot of this is about, from my perspective, is what will be most helpful for the public to understand, people that are following along with this, how do you set expectations with the community of what's really going to happen? And if this commission feels that keeping those in the beyond category is the most effective way to handle those projects, I'm comfortable with that. I would defer to your recommendation there. I don't know if there was another one, but I think that got to most of your points.
Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Dish?
So I wanted to raise a question about the language that I think you were just referring to. So on the non-motorized connection under East Medical Center Drive, it's not likely within the upcoming six-year CIP cycle due to funding limitations and other project priorities. So are those two things linked? Are they separable? If funding were available, would that lift, you know, would that push them up in the priority? And this is an important question to ask about that B2B trail connection because there is the private charity that raises money for the B2B trail. And, and I think has raised the priority of the, of the other connections that we've worked on, like the underpass that were the train track underpass that we're working on. And instruction could be given to city staff to reach out to Huron Waterloo Parkway, Pathways, and talk to them about whether they want to raise funds for this. This was, this was a significant topic of discussion during the discussion, or I will put that really mildly, discussion about widening the East Medical Center Bridge, the idea that there would be an alternative underneath, and that the city should move that up, or really as, you know, acknowledging that we had made a situation worse by this decision that we made about widening the bridge, and we should ameliorate a situation that our decision made worse. So I think this is something that I would also like some, you know, again, I would like you to respond or think about the question whether if Huron Waterloo raised some money, would that change the city's thinking about this? Is it a technical problem? Is this way more complicated and way more expensive than we thought? And also, what is the, because I do think that there's supposed to be bicycle work on the actual street, on the roadways, not necessarily, not, I mean, there are two separate ways in which bike traffic could be ameliorated there. And I, my understanding is that there was supposed to be something on the surface roads as well. So I think we need to know a little bit more about this situation at this crossing. And that doesn't mean that you move it up, but just you clarify for us, would engaging with Huron River Waterloo... you move it up, but just you clarify for us, would engaging with Huron River Waterloo Pathways help, you know, in a, in a long-term way, but that would, that would justify keeping it in the beyond category, because it would mean that we're asking the city to take action to, to shorten the horizon here, because this is a critical connection in the city. Those of us who live on the north side have our number of different ways we can risk our lives and try to get to our jobs. So, you know, and, you know, obviously, one would love the University of Michigan to make better connectivity, but it's not clear that the connectivity they produce is going to serve the residents of the north side, so it's going to serve the campus, but there are ways to do that that are, that really don't help anybody who lives in the neighborhoods along Pontiac and other places which are very highly populated, because we've been building a lot there. So anything that you can, this is really an informational thing, I think, as in one respect, Commissioner Adams' question was an informational question. And the information that Commissioner Mills has presented about what's in Vision Zero, what is the referent in that passage? Is it the above ground or the below ground? All of this stuff could be great if staff would give us more information, so a postpone wouldn't, wouldn't be, there'd be some clear reasons, answers, that were information that we're looking for, and not asking you to reprioritize because it's really out of our expertise.
Well, can, can I clarify that, though? If we're going to go through the exercise, for example, to, what I'm hearing is, one, re-introduce the Sunset Sidewalk as an isolated project, and score it and prioritize it, I guess, that's what I'm trying, I'm trying to understand, the, the reason for the postponement would be to give staff time to decouple, go back to the original Sunset project, understand how that would or wouldn't impact other priority projects with those same sources. So we would come back and say, okay, based on this, no, it still doesn't rise to a higher level, or now, it would, we would recommend this in year three, and that means these other two or three projects now go into that some future category. Similarly, for this, this project, I guess I want to be clear, if, if you want us to bring more information on that, like, what, what you're talking about is, I think it's going to be really challenging. Like, when you're talking about if we were to engage with a nonprofit for funding, my question to you would be, how much money are they going to bring to it? So that we know how that would impact into our, our financial assets for prioritizing that. If we don't care about going through that exercise, my recommendation to you would be just take it from hold, put it on a future list, that is, again, to Kayla's perspective, we think on hold is being a little bit more honest, that we don't know how to pay for this in the next six years. It's not that putting it in the sixth year is a statement that we'd know how to pay for it, but it seems a little softer. On hold, I think, is a little bit more transparent, that, yeah, this is a project that we think would be great, but we have no idea how we're going to resource it. And so if we don't want to go through that exercise, I guess I would just ask the commission to think about what additional information do you want, or would be helpful for you to make a decision on this capital improvement plan?
Got it. Commissioner White?
I think I'm still in the, the nexus of, do we actually own the document, and what that actually means?
You do.
Okay.
You can ignore all of the advice that we presented.
And, and, but I also want to pay attention to the amount of work that the document requires and the cascade, and I think the happy compromise in one's mind, maybe mine, is an opportunity for Ms. Coman to go back and then look at things and then come back to us. If you're saying, eh, that's really not as good.
Hundred percent, I'm on the same page, I just want to be clear, I'm hearing different things about what are we coming back with, and that's, that's all I want to be clear about.
Because otherwise, it feels like the only thing, if we care, excuse me, that, that was too conditional.
Of course we care.
Given, given the, given the context of how we are invited to participate in this process, which is at the end, it means we either accept or reject. And currently, there are significant things that the CIP deprioritize that some, or many members of this body care about, and given our responsibility to you, it would mean that we would probably vote it down. That's one outcome. Otherwise, this whole hour-long conversation was just something other than what we hoped that it would accomplish. So given that, that it's either approve or reject, is there a, a third way? And that was part of what I was asking for when we started talking earlier, which was, we, and I think Commissioner Adams actually said it best, we don't, I can't figure out, like, how and why the things that got removed, got removed. That happened through a series of meetings, and I think, I appreciate what you have articulated at the, at the dais tonight, which is, you're trying to be more honest about what's actually in the CIP, and you're saying, this thing has been in here for 10 years, are we really going to build it? And staff have said, no. And that seems to be a fairly honest response, and now it's here at the table, and we're like, but we want you to. And it sounds like our only option to communicate back to staff that we want you to is to vote against the plan, which feels so strong in, in a sense. I think, you know, for the lack of a better word, it just feels disproportionate in a way. And so if there's not a, from what I'm hearing from you, Mr. Leonard, if there's not a reasonable, non-disproportional way to do it, then I think you're telling us we own the document, and if we don't like what the document has, we reject the document.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, as disproportionate, there are other options, we, you can postpone this, and I, I just want to, I just want to be clear that if that's your choice, I want to make sure that I know what you would like to see to come back. And so you definitely have an option here. Yeah, yeah, but, but the other piece I want to, I want to be, this is kind of coming back to Commissioner Lee's comment about the, the message to staff and the direction. I know it's hard because of how you framed it, you're getting this list of consequence at the end of the process, but it would also be really helpful in April for us to say, instead of us saying, we are going to prioritize project based on a variety of criteria, including efficiency of resources, where they align, safety, equity, and the like. However, that would also be a great time for the Planning Commission to send us a message to staff, but we don't care about that for this underpass, we think that should not be subject to that same scoring criteria, because that's what we're presenting to you. We, we came to you in April, and we said, we are going to prioritize based on a lot of different things, and based on available resources and some of that scoring, that's, that's how some of these projects have resulted in the consequences that they have. And so it's totally okay, it is your document, you do not have to be governed or abide by those scores that we presented, by the prioritization that we presented, it is 100% your document, but we do a lot of work to give it to you in a way that's well-reasoned, well-founded, and logical in that regard. So, so I, I understand the gravity, because you're getting these consequences, it's hard because there are projects that we all see that we would like to see. We wish, you know, speaking for everybody in this building, we wish that this was 10 pages longer of projects we can accomplish, we can't, we got to make some trade-offs.
Yep, understood. Councilmember Dish, and then Commissioner Wetherby.
Just wanted to clarify as much as I could, the questions that you posed. What I thought I understood when Commissioner Adams and I exchanged earlier was that, the question is, how would, if you, if, instead of replacing the Sunset Sidewalk project with a holistic speculative, has no funding, and is nine years out, if you just went back to, what would be, how, what would you, how would the sidewalk project itself rank today? Not asking for it to be reprioritized this year, just how would it rank? Because then we can instruct for next year, we can try to get it, come, to come back alive on its own feet and have it prioritized, but it's too late for that, so just the question is, how would it rank?
Well, that's, that's my question, if we go back and consider that project just as a sidewalk, we could probably consider to see how it ranked in the prioritization this year as well. So that's my question, we can, we can do that scoring, and we can feed you that raw number, but we could also tell you, how would that change the order of projects? If it, yeah, so that's what I wanted to be clear about.
So you could tell us that, but not necessarily actually put it into action and change it?
No, we could.
You could, you really could?
Yeah, we could put it in year five and tell you that, because we're adding this to year five, and it's a $150,000 project, that means this other $150,000 project is now going to go into year six. We could do that.
Yeah, and if that other $150,000 project is lower rank, I'm not unhappy about that.
Yep, yep, but then it's, the decoupling is coming away from that community conversation, and it's also coming away from a very staff-oriented intention. If we're going to have a broader conversation, let's have a broad conversation about water mains and the like. That would also be setting aside that coalescence of trying to maybe only crack that street once, to say, nope, we've, the sidewalk was previously identified, there might, their planning commission is here by saying, we get that in a perfect world, we would link that with other investment, in this case, we don't think we should do that.
I think we could, now, does this come to council, too, or are we the last word?
You approve it, and then it's forwarded to City Council as your voice.
As, okay. And does City Council get to write resolutions and say, planning commission was dumb, or we love this?
They can, but planning commission doesn't have to do anything in this regard, like they do with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Then, and then in terms of the second thing about the underpass thing, this feels more murky to me, but I feel as though there needs to be, I feel like a conversation needs to happen with maybe someone else who negotiates with other entities, you know, and just talk to that person about how to think about this thing, moving it up, getting some funding in place, so the priority can shift, rather than asking you hypothetically, if somebody dropped a bomb full of dollars, would you change it? Yeah.
Yeah, no, and I, the short answer is absolutely that could change it, but it's really hard for us to do that without understanding what that, how. Before we go too far, and before I lose this thread, you want more than a week to do all this, right?
I am out of the office all of next week.
So February 4th might be the returning, rather than January 23rd, is my recommendation.
The other, just briefly, we haven't yet discussed this as an option, and I don't know that it will be amenable to the commission, but keep in mind that we do update this plan every year. We do an overhaul in the even years, and more minor modifications in the odd years, but that is not a hard and fast rule, that we can't make changes in the outer years next year, in 2025. So I do think another option would be approval with a list of conditions that items be addressed in the fall of 2025 CIP cycle. I, I would defer to Mr. Leonard as to whether that's appropriate, but it seems that you could still approve this. What's most important is, if there's anything in, especially FY '26, but really FY '26 and '27 that you see issue with, that's what gets put together as the budget, the two-year budget cycle. In the two-year budget, they're not looking at anything beyond FY '27 anyway.
Sure.
So that is an option, but I recognize if you're not comfortable putting your stamp on a plan that has these items that bring great concern, I completely understand, but I do think you could propose conditions, or write a supplemental memo, or something of that nature, that illustrates what must be addressed in the next cycle.
Got it, thank you. And then Commissioner Wetherby with one of the final comments.
So, in listening to all this, I kind of agree with everyone, which is yay, but one of the problems that I look at when I'm looking at this is looking at the project cleanup, and I see, wow, Hill Street, Fifth to Waschnau, safety improvements have been taken out. And we know one person was killed, another person was badly injured on that, on Hill Street. So do we then start, does this start to add up? You know, we know that's a highly trafficked area, we know that safety improvements could be, so I'm not saying that I don't think any of the others, I'm, I'm just kind of using that as an example of, of everything could be looked at as, well, my thing of my experience is, on Hill Street, we need these safety improvements, and maybe in that particular case, this was folded into something else, but I'm just kind of using it.
It's marked with a C, which is that it's either done, or it will be done by the end of this current fiscal year, so that isn't suggesting that it was put on hold or eliminated, it's, the cleanup is both work that's been done and other cleanups.
Okay, but I'm sort of just using it as an example of, like, everything could be, and if we talk about political issues, we are not, other than Commissioner, or.
Councilmember.
Councilmember Dish, we are not elected, and we bring our own politics and our own specific look at, hey, this piece, you know, I, the runway expansion of the airport, or, which has been a huge deal in the community, like, at, at this table, at this point, pulling these out just seems to me to be like, wow, we're just really trying to, and I'm not saying that any of these things are, are not worth doing, but it's, it seems like, I, I would be more inclined to approve this, and then do some of the look at next year, or how can we make the strategy, you know, more important for next year of these pieces that we're looking at? Because I just feel like we could take a lot of things out, and certain sidewalk gaps, and certain that could then just, and, and we're not going through that process, we're going through of, I walk on Hill Street, and I want this to be changed, or we know something bad happened on this street, and, and so I'm just, that's my perspective, I, I agree with what everybody said, but it just feels like this is, it seems like this is too late, and yet it is our document, and so I, I agree that, that we should be able to say, but there's a lot in this document, and I know a lot of people have taken a lot of time to make this as feasible and as realistic a document as possible, and to kind of pull out certain things and make certain changes, maybe it's worth it for these specified pieces, but it just seems like us doing this at this point is not, not the best use of everyone's time.
Got it. Commissioner Hammer, Smith?
Really quick, I promise. First of all, thank you for all of this work, I don't know how, you've got all this in your head. I have a question that I should probably know the answer to, the scoring criteria for this CIP, was it, was it different than, it was, right? Okay. That makes, so I think things got shuffled around a lot based on this new criteria, right? So I was just looking back, I think I found the 2024 CIP, and, you know, for example, the Fuller thing we're talking about back then was programmed for 2027, the Sunset was 2028, 2029. To your point, we're really just looking at the next two years, so like, that could say 2027, but that doesn't mean that the budget is actually going to be allocated for it. I think it's like a really important thing to understand, I think, you know, tracking these things, it'd be great if like, it stays in that 2027 year, but Commissioner Wetherby, thank you for saying a lot of things very coherently that have been in my head, too, and then I think with your suggestion of like, we'll be visiting this every year, and things can always be folded back in, I think maybe with the new criteria, this saw the biggest shakeup, and this is a good opportunity for us to like, really dig in, and then for next year, come back with, like, my neighborhood doesn't have sidewalks, can I have them? You know, like, that's not in here anywhere. But if there are those like really high-profile projects, like, the, the odds that this underpass would have been done in FY '26, it was never on for FY '26, right? So I just wanted to make sure that a lot of this was kind of not caused, but the, the new scoring criteria kind of like reshuffled a lot of these priorities. Thanks.
Thank you, I'm going to do Commissioner Norton, and then Commissioner Adams.
So I want to reiterate, I totally get how much of a challenge you have in all of these projects pulled together, and that your process has been quite robust, but I would point out, there is a role for us to play in reviewing this and finding things, and there's a role for the public to play in reviewing it and making public comments. And really, only of the 502 projects, the only two that have popped up have been these two. So it's not like we're tearing apart the plan and everything that's going on, and it sounds to me like there are pretty valid reasons for why these two things are popping up on the table and raising questions, and if I heard Commissioner Mills correctly, it was in the transportation plan to worry about the underpass, so I'm actually okay with approving it with the request that in next year, we revisit that and pull it up and think about it more carefully, because I think it's been under, somehow it got lost in the mix in a way that all of us who experienced that intersection just can't believe. And it's not that it's just my intersection, I want, you know, I want it to be fixed. I biked over most of the city, and I can tell you, that's one of the most dangerous intersections to bike, and I think the other bikers here would agree with that. So there's something for experience that counts, right? So, so I don't know what to say about the Sunset thing, but, but as far as that, I'm okay with approving the plan with the request that we revisit that particular intersection next year, when it would. that we revisit that particular intersection next year, when, when we go through this process again, and maybe ask, if possible, I know this is a huge amount of work for you, but instead of it feeling like we're only getting this at the very last minute, and we don't, either can approve or deny, and that, some way to have more meaningful input earlier in the process so that we can feel like we're making a meaningful input would be really helpful. And finally, thank you for all of your work. I totally get how, how challenging all of this is, and don't want it, want this to come across as critiquing you, but, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams?
I mean, I, I think, and at the risk of repeating myself, I'd prefer to proceed with a motion postponed. And, and I'm saying that largely with respect to the issue that I raised, and less with respect to the, the issues with the bridges and the underpasses. Partially, the, I, first of all, I think we can. I, I don't think we, cost us, I mean, it's an extra few weeks, but like, we can. The second thing is, this has gone on for, in, in the case of the Sunset project, for four years. And it was an administrative decision that ultimately caused a deviation from a prioritization scheme that staff, council, there's a lot of participation that went into how these sidewalk projects are ranked. This project got taken out of the queue, right? So a decision was made that it was very high priority, second on the list, right, the second tranche of projects, and now is off in 2031. So I want this project reconsidered standalone, and I feel very strongly about that. So if, if necessary, I'll make the motion to postpone and get a vote on that, and if it gets voted down, it gets voted down. But I think this project needs to get separated from this thing that we can't fund, and reconsidered according to its priority under the city's agreed, established prioritization scheme, and I don't want to deviate from that. If staff comes back and says, this project is actually here, that's fine. But I think in addition to the fact of its scoring from a pure safety perspective, the fact that we've already spent $30,000 to $40,000 on the plans that exist, it matters, and I, and I want that taken into, in consideration as well.
Thank you. Commissioner Mills, did you want to add one final thought?
My final thought is, in April, or whenever we see you next, this is a follow-up to what Commissioner Norton was saying. If we have that full list of things that are on hold, I think that would be really helpful, and also the full list of the things that are lingering for a while, because I think that, or that seem to move significantly down in this reorg, you know, reprioritization, I think that'll help us flag a couple of things. So thank you for that. I, I'm of the mind too, that it, this stuff probably wouldn't be funded this year anyway, and so making sure that we don't lose sight of this next time makes sense to me.
Got it. With that, I think we've had plenty of discussion on it, so I'm going to wait for motion. Would anyone like to make a motion? Commissioner? All right. Do I have a second?
That would be to February 4th.
Correct. Do I have a second? Commissioner White, we are going to, this is on a, I'm sorry?
Can I ask a question, discussion?
Uh, yes.
Just for the purpose of addressing the Sunset, we're postponing that particular, I'm trying to get to what do you need to do before February 4th?
I think staff has feedback as well on what feedback that they can provide back on the other issue as well. I, I, I think that we ought to use the next, you know, three to four weeks to answer some of the questions and respond to some of the feedback that's been raised. I think my issue's more discreet, the, the other issue's more complicated, but the, the time, I think, we're benefited by that time, and we should take it.
Councilmember Dish?
I think the one little piece that's not that complicated about the underpass thing is the question of the statement in the Vision Zero Plan, and how was Steph interpreting that statement, or how should we be interpreting it?
Gotcha. And to clarify right now, we are in the motion to postpone to February 4th, and we're in discussion of that. So do we have any other comments from commissioners regarding this particular motion? Okay. With that, I think this is a roll call, or is this a?
Voice vote to postpone, that's fine.
Okay. Voice vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, wait, how many is that? Sorry. I, I actually need you to put your hands up. One, two, three, four. Okay? And then all those against, raise your hands. One, two, three, four.
So the motion fails.
Motion fails. Okay. All right, we're back to the original motion of the motion that was read regarding CIP. CIP's been drafted by city asset category teams and reviewed by the city planning commission, resolved that we approved the capital improvements plan, and resolved that we recommend that the city council approve the 2631 capital improvements as the basis for the 26 and 27 capital budget. So we're in that motion right now. Do we have any other motions with respect to a modification? Commissioner Mills?
If we want it, wanted it to go with a memo that effectively says, like, let's make sure that in the spring, we do these things early, that we take up Sunset, that we take up what we actually mean by Fuller and Maiden transportation improvements, that we look at the list of things, what is the appropriate mechanism to make sure that that happens? Do I need to amend, like?
So, so you are proposing a, a condition to the motion that when this is transmitted to the city council, it comes with a cora communication that in advance of the next capital improvement plan review, which would be next year, that the planning commission has an earlier dialogue to talk about specifically the Sunset sidewalk project, independent of other projects, and the underpass for the border to border trail.
And I would suggest that it might be useful for us to also have that list of all the projects on hold, and the moldy old ones in the beyond category.
We can definitely, we can definitely do that. Councilmember Dish?
I don't want to make a motion or a condition to voting yes on the plan, or no on the plan, as the case may be, but I would like to make a request that the information that was foreseen as the rationale for a postponement accompany the plan when it's communicated to council. Is that possible? Or is it not possible?
Yeah, I, I can draft a correspondence that I, it would be my reflection of the correspondent, the conversation here, and it would, I would highlight the expansion of scope of the Sunset sidewalk, how frankly, process ended up with that being lumped into a much larger project that got it further and further out, where it became no longer a seemingly viable project on the horizon. The seeming disconnect of understanding what the Moving Together Plan says, and the putting of the underpass on hold, more rationale about that, how that should be a priority, full stop. I think I would add, come back to this commission, towards, sort of towards Commissioner Mills, is we can provide additional information about that distinction, and why we don't envision enough funding source for it over the next six years. And then, so you were basically sort of asking that even if the plan were adopted, that it comes with sort of a, bit of a alternative opinion from the planning commission on some of those specific issues?
Or just information from staff that is more hypothetical in nature, because the plan, planning commission's already voted on the plan, so it would be hypothetically, if we were to rerank the sidewalk?
Yeah, and I'd be happy to bring that language to you. You could consider that language before it's transmitted as well.
That would be great. And then just also that, here's how we interpreted that passage in Vision Zero when we looked at the underpass projects, or something like that, just the information.
I think probably best on both accounts that I could bring those back for your consideration.
That would be great. Thank you.
So as of this particular motion, do we, we need a modification or a condition set? Is that correct, Mr. Leonard? I would, I would suggest if you want to proceed, modify the motion that it will be accompanied by a memorandum to be approved by the planning commission, to accompany its transmittal to the city council, and then we'll bring that back to you for consideration. And then that will formally accompany the CIP when it goes to the city council. And then we would start the conversation about how we, how you roll up your sleeves next year to spend more time on this earlier. Yes. Okay, got it. So effectively, kind of a, yeah, like somewhat of a functional this moment, in essence, Commissioner White, final comment? It would still be, it would still be approved. It would just basically stay in status until that memo was done, and then they would both be, they would both go in together onto a future city council agenda. Okay, got it, understood. But it would, to Caitlin's point, it would give frankly, staff the ability to understand that we have a pretty good sense of what the CIP is going to say for the next two years for our budget planning purposes. Okay, got it. Thank you. Commissioner White?
So just to clarify, Mr. Leonard, when I have asked for the very thing we're about to do for this, you have said that this is not inappropriate communication for the planning commission to pass to council. You have said that council gets our minutes, and they see our action as the table. Can you help me understand what the difference is now?
You've, you've sent other memos recently. You advanced a report on home occupations to the city council.
But that was a direct request from council. So, so what I'm specifically talking about is an action, which is what we're taking. We're just taking a vote.
Yep. And that vote is going to be the action. Your memo?
Exactly.
Can be considered or disregarded by the city council?
You have been very particular, because I have asked for this several times at the table. You've been very particular to say that it is inappropriate for us to do that, because council makes its own decisions, and that they get our minutes, and they see our action. So I'm just, for my, for my understanding, both as vice chair and as a member of the, the commission, I'm just trying to understand why, in this case, it is now permissible for us to take this action.
Well, maybe I'm mistaken. What I can do is have the city attorney provide advice. In this case, again, like, if you were taking a recommendation on an action, like, say, say you want to make a recommendation on rezoning to the city council, you should make that action, and that action, as your duty as the planning commission, is to make that recommendation. I would not recommend that you forward a recommendation for, we recommend approval, but then it accompanies with a memo that says, but we don't really mean it. So I would not recommend that. In this case, you are adopting a plan, and that plan is going to be presented to them as your voice. You are approving the CIP. In this case, it's not, it's going to have, not going to have the Sunset sidewalk on it. It is not going to have the underpass, presuming it passes. Consequently, you are going to then, this condition is directing me to bring a memo back to you, that you are going to forward to the city council and say, by the way, next time, we, we intend to send you a capital improvement plan that is going to have these projects in it, and it may be irregardless of other prioritization scoring that we consider.
Yeah, I, I can take this offline to talk more, to understand why in this case it's permissible. It, because there, I, this again, is still just a decision of the table.
Yeah.
And, but now we are making a decision.
Let me pose that to the city attorney, so.
And then sending a memo, even though council is its own body, and so it can.
But council doesn't have any agency over this decision.
It does, through the budget.
Only, but it has that agency regardless.
I, again, so if, if the distinction is, because they don't have, what, I guess, legislative action on this, it's us, then we can do that. I mean, all I'm trying to understand is why in the past, when I have asked, this has been impermissible, but now it is.
I actually.
And that's for helping me with guidance for when something like this comes again, so that I, I'm, I have a better understanding of it, and it's, it could be something that could be offline, that the city attorney could pick up, and then say, in these cases, this is what we would recommend, and in these cases, we wouldn't recommend it, so that we have a standard operating procedure for that.
Please, let's take that one offline. Thank you. If I could just, with your. 15 seconds. Okay. You don't have to, this memo means nothing. Your action is the CIP. You have full agency to make those changes next year. You don't have to telegraph that to the city council. So I would just add that. Understand. Would it be reasonable to take a three-minute break? We've been on this topic for quite some time. You would like to vote? Okay. All right, sounds good. Okay, I'm going to read the motion, just so that we're clear. I'm going to read it word for word. Just a second. Okay. The proposed motion is that whereas Section 1185 of the Ann Arbor City Code requires that the city planning commission annually prepare a capital improvements plan, identifying public improvements that will be needed within the ensuing six years, in the general order priority, whereas the 26, the fiscal year 26 and 31, CIP has been drafted by the city asset category teams, reviewed by the city planning commission, and resolve that the city planning commission hereby approves the 26 to 31 capital improvements plan, and resolve that the city planning commission recommends that the city council approve the 2631 capital improvements plan as the basis for the 26 and 27 capital budget. No modifications or conditions. Everybody clearly understand what that will go to? A roll call, vote. Councilmember Lee? Oh, Commissioner, Commissioner. Commissioner Lee. Thanks, yeah. It's like, well, thank, no. But we were talking. No. Yes. My apologies. Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Hammer Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Dish?
Yes.
Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetherby?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
No.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes.
The plan passes. Okay. Thank you. Just a note to staff, let's definitely revisit that, more engaged, meaningful engagement prior to. Thank you. Okay, are we moving on to the next item? Everybody's okay on a energy basis? Okay, let's keep going. We're going to move on to agenda number 9B. This is 371 Silo Church Road. Annexation site plan and rezoning for city council approval, approval proposal to rezone the four vacant parcels, 6.3 acres to R4E, multiple family residential for the construction of 75 residential townhouse units in 12 new buildings. There will be 167 parking spaces on site with garages, and surface parking is accessed through one central drive to Silo Church approval. With that, we're going to go to petitioner presentation with the Robertson Brothers Homes. Welcome.
Thank you. Good to see you all again. It's been a while. Tim Lockren with Robertson Homes, 6905 Telegraph Road in Bloomfield. I've got a presentation. If you'll indulge me, I think I have to bring it up here, though, Matt.
You're perfectly fine. If you will excuse us for our technical difficulties earlier.
No worries.
Happens. Yep.
Okay, I think we're good. Okay, so again, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. It's good to see you all again. So we're here today to present the 75 South Main project, Silo Church Road and Ann Arbor-Seline Road, basically southwest corner, west of the southwest corner. We've been working on the site for a while, so it took us a while to get to you, but that's something we're very excited about, and I'd love to walk you through it. So it's actually currently a county island in Pittsfield Township, so it's one of the few county islands you have left. As you, I'm sure know, you're all the planning commission, you know that the master plan, the comprehensive plan, has guidelines specifically for those township islands. So, for instance, Village of Ann Arbor was a Ann Arbor Township island, and this, of course, is Pittsfield Township island. So the point is really to clean these up as they go, when there's utilities available, which there are, so it's been longstanding site there, and we're excited to propose development on the property. So I know it might be difficult to see, but it's about six acres. We're proposing 75 townhomes. Those would be three-story townhomes, similar to what we had approved on the Village of Ann Arbor, just a little bit different architecture. They're about 1,600 square feet, three bedrooms each, and, and they'd have two attached, two car-attached garages for each one of them. We've worked hard with staff over the last year or so on many of the aspects of the site plan, to what you see today. We've also worked with the neighborhood. We had a neighborhood meeting on September, February 22nd last year. It's been a while. And I think we've made a lot of improvements to the plan, and made it, made it much more, much more buildable in many respects. So it's a difficult site, just if you're looking at. So it's a difficult site, just if you're looking at it, it's very strange. There's four different parcels, two different owners. We tried our best to try to assemble a little bit more there to make it a little more cohesive, but that's what we have. So it's difficult to do that. It's very long and narrow, obviously, to two streets, which has made things complicated such as fire access and things like that. So that's what took us a lot of time to move through. As you'll see, we've really tried to add quite a bit of buffering to the surrounding property owners, particularly on the west side. Out of that neighborhood meeting, there was quite a bit of discussion on, you know, just the difference in product and development on the site. What we've done since that meeting is add a lot of trees, as you'll see. In fact, there's almost, there's a double row of trees in many respects to those adjacent properties. The homes are pretty close. Those are duplex homes, so there's attached residential as well. They're pretty close to the property line. We've moved our units five feet even further than what we originally had, so there's a 25-foot setback to the property line along that western boundary, plus the double row of plantings for most of that section. So we feel that that's quite a bit of buffer, again, more of a setback than what's there with the adjacent properties and then a lot of landscape buffering. And then as you go further down, one of the things that was very important to the neighborhood, I know the Carol's can attest to this there tonight, we had at one point thought about connecting from our property to Autobahn, which is a private street. They had no interest in that whatsoever. And it would have helped us from a fire access standpoint, probably would have helped with some solid waste comments, but at the end of the day, they were adamant about it. We understand it, so we did not push that issue. There's a lot of grade there, too, as well. To make that work was a challenge, but we did have a plan at one point. But certainly, we wanted to respect the wishes of our neighbors there, so we're not proposing any access there, and that's really at the bottom of Autobahn as it connects. That's where I'm talking about. The other thing I missed, as far as a buffer, we are proposing a six-foot fence, decorative fence, along the property line as well for a little bit additional buffering. Obviously, there's nothing there right now, so that would be adjacent to where the two buildings are, which is two duplexes. The other thing I want to point out, and this was not in the neighborhood meeting, there was a lot of comment about this, trying to get a pedestrian access to Ann Arbor Celine Road. It was very difficult to do, and the storm ponds there because that's really where the storm pond wants to be. And you really couldn't fit units there and a storm pond, obviously, and that just was enough room to fit the storm pond. And so we did not have room to put a sidewalk or pedestrian connection there, but I know it was very important. In the neighborhood meeting, we heard quite a bit about that, and it was important to us, too. It makes sense from a planning perspective. I'm a planner by trade. It makes sense to have a connection, because people aren't going to walk all the way over to, you know, the intersection to come down. So we were able to squeeze it in. Our engineer worked with the county water resources to, you know, work through the calculations and able to squeeze a five-foot sidewalk. So it doesn't sound like much to us. It was really important to squeeze that in, so I'm happy to report that we do have that there. And it goes along the south side of the stormwater pond. It actually kind of then goes, jogs up and across just because of grade. That's the best we can do, but I think it was really important to provide that connection, so we're happy to have that there. Just going through the site data table a little bit, I noticed that I have something incorrect there. I know you guys were going to call me out on it. The site plan that we'd submit is correct. Staff's, staff report is correct. I don't have that many parking spaces. It's 150, which is, I know Commissioner White was going to ask me this question, as a matter of fact. So it's 150, obviously, the two in each garage and then 17 guest spaces. So that's, that's something that I had incorrect on here and I apologize for that, but all the plans are correct. So that's about 2.2 units, spaces per unit. And then this doesn't call out the EV chargers. There'll be EV chargers in the garages for those cars, and then four of the guest spaces would have EV chargers as well. So that's something we're more than happy to do. And then really, the thing I want to focus on is just the overall open space. It's almost 50% open space, which is a lot of open space, particularly for this type of product in this kind of configuration of the site. So we're happy that, you know, 49%, I think, is something that's going to be a benefit to not only the residents, but the surrounding neighbors and the city as a whole. So happy to, you know, as we go forward, answer any questions specific on the site plan, but those are sort of the highlights I wanted to point out. From a site context, I think you all know the location. Again, it's kind of a strange little area that it's still a county island, or sorry, township island, south of Pioneer High School off Silo Church. There's a little bit that's developed already at the corner. The master plan calls for, and I'll show it in the next slide, but more office and commercial at the corner, fading to attached residential, which is exactly what we're proposing. And then there's attached residential to the direct west of us, that's the Autobahn Street, as I mentioned, and then single family as you go further west. So it's just kind of a logical integration of land uses as you move west from there. And again, it meets the master plan, which is kind of called out here. Again, this is very old language, obviously, but specifically, the master plan calls out these specific township islands. Each one has like a certain site number, and this is site one in this area, so it talks about it, and it's not, it's hard to see, it's highlighted, but again, it calls out, it's not specific on density, it's not specific on height, it's not specific on a lot of those things, but it calls out attached single-family use as west and south of the office users, which of course, that's where we're at in this little section here. So we believe that we meet the master plan, so does staff. Quickly on the summary, as I mentioned, it's about six acres, about 12 to 13 units per acre overall. It is in Pittsfield Township, so the request in front of you is annexation, rezoning and site plan, so we would move forward to Pittsfield Township for their annexation. I don't want to say automatic annexation, but it is, I know there's an intergovernmental agreement as far as that process. But first, I have to come to you, make sure that it's a project you're looking for your community. So that's where we're at today. We're proposing a zoning of R4E, which I know Valhalla is zoned R4E, you've got some in that area as well. But again, the master plan designation is for attached single-family townhomes, which R4E allows. And the plan type, you know, I hate throwing out missing middle, you guys hear it too much, but it is important. This is something that I think is a benefit to the city as far as, I would not call this affordable housing, I'm not going to stand up here and say that, but it's also half the cost of new single-family detached. And that's important. You know, we'd certainly love to build detached single-family in the city, but this is certainly, I think, something that people are looking for where they can get into a house. You don't get your backyard, but you do get some living space, and this is a really popular project. We're building something, you might be familiar, we're building something similar to this in Pittsfield Township down the street about a mile, so it'd be similar to that type of project, which has been successful. Just a few highlights. Listen, the site's great for stadium parking, but really, really hasn't, you know, created any value for the city. I don't know what that was. Did I lose time already?
Let's give them one more minute.
I can go pretty quick.
Yeah, one minute, thank you.
It's not really creating value for the city, so I'm not going through all of these, but we think it really is a good productive use of the land and, you know, logical buffering land use and transitional land use between your commercial and your residential to the west. Just quickly, and I didn't point this, I did need to point this, we are proposing an all-electric community. That's something, as you know from Robertson, it's not something we just, hey, this is just what we're going to do, because it sounds good. We took a lot of time to think about it. We've worked with Rich and the Wolf Pack. I think we've given them some good information. They've certainly given us good information over the years, so we've worked a lot of things out, and that's something that we're really proud of. This is the plan again. I kind of talked about it. You've seen it, the Village of Ann Arbor plans, but your first floor, you got your garage and the, come through the rear of the unit, the flex room downstairs, everything kind of living area on the second floor, and then three bedrooms on the third floor, and then the rooftop deck above that. I want to be, I'll be really quick on this. We spent a lot of time working with solid waste on this. You know, we're happy to build this with exactly how it is, but it has a dumpster on it, and we just do not believe this type of home buyer wants a dumpster, where they'll walk, have to walk to their dumpster. This is a, this is a single family, it's a nice community, it's a nice home. These are for-sale units. That is a multifamily apartment requirement, and we're being labeled as a multifamily. It's the first one I've seen in Ann Arbor where this has been forced upon. It's important to us, because I think it's important to our buyers. It's going to be important when we run the HOA, they're going to be asking us, why do I have to take my trash to a dumpster? I think this is a problem, and we've been trying to convey that. I love staff, I don't have any issue with anybody in staff, but this is something that I felt we needed to bring to you, because we're not, we're not thrilled with it. It's not good for the community, it's not good for the residents, it's going to be loud for the neighboring property when trucks come in there multiple times a week and pick up the trash. So listen, this is your city. If this is how, you know, you want this community to look, we'll be fine with it. We do think we would like to have a condition of a development agreement, similar to what we had at Village of Ann Arbor, where there could be curbside pickup. We would be happy to have the HOA pay for it separately and privately contract. I know that's an issue with the city, so I'm bringing it up. I don't think it's necessarily Planning Commission purview. I think it's important for me to bring it up, because it's something that's really kind of caused us issues on this, on the site, and we've worked well with staff, we're willing to build it the way it's shown, which meets their requirements, but we think this would be a better way to develop the site. So I kind of rushed through that, but, you know, we're happy to move forward on the site. We're proud of what we're presenting here, and love to answer any questions you have and listen to the neighborhood as well. So, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much. With that, we will go to staff. Mr. Kowalski.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Take off my other glasses. Okay, so petitioner did a good job summarizing up the general aspects of the project. I'm just going to kind of touch on a couple of the highlights. Obviously, what's in front of you tonight has three actions, as was indicated. There's an annexation as one motion, there's a rezoning, and of course, a site plan with the development agreement. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about the site plan and the rezoning in a minute. The annexation, again, is, I don't think I need to discuss that too much, it's obviously well within our annexation boundaries and utilities and all that, so. Okay, so a couple of the project highlights, again, I may be repeating some of the things, but I think it's important, because these were items, again, that we worked with the petitioner developer with various staff to make the project better, we feel. So again, as noted, the project is an all-electric project, so there will be no natural gas connection to that. There's additional, there was a sustainability memo as well that was attached to your packet. The petitioner has, again, they did highlight the sidewalk, that was an important feature for staff, as well as to get that connection to Ann Arbor Celine Road there for these residents, as well as any adjacent residents. I mean, it was a little challenging to put it in there, because that's not a very large parcel that fronts Ann Arbor Celine Road there, and with the detention basin, however, they did make it work. It is a five-foot sidewalk that will go out directly, and then it just, they're just, or a little bit north of where the sidewalk hits Ann Arbor Celine Road, there is a marked crosswalk there, so. Okay, so the crosswalk, additional landscaping was touched on, the western property boundary, the buffer there, they have, of course, there was required mitigation trees for some landmark trees that will be removed. In addition, there is additional landscaping that's provided in there. We've asked for about as much as that our landscape, landscape staff would advise that would grow there successfully. We can't really put too much more there without crowding other items out. There is a fence that's going to be proposed at that location. Actually, the petitioner had mentioned six foot, it does say eight foot on the plan, so I would assume it's going to be an eight foot. Yep, no problem. So an eight-foot privacy fence that goes along that, the western property line. Also, another key aspect of this project is the parking, but the majority, obviously, the vast majority of this parking is in a structure, well, in garages attached. There is a little bit of surface parking, but it is relatively minimal. And so those are kind of the main site plan aspects of it. However, obviously, a big part of your decision here tonight is the rezoning aspect of it. So that's where staff does a little bit more analysis. We, originally, when the project was proposed, you know, we did meet with the petitioner on the type of project that they wanted to propose, the density and everything, and we obviously, like with any project, we looked through numerous zoning districts to see what would really work. The project did, obviously, we decided on an R4E, and part of the reasoning behind that, the petitioner went with that, is a large, large amount to do with the open space that's required. I've noted in that, my staff report, the density is actually less than an R2A density that they're proposing on the site, 75 units over six-plus acres or so. So the density is not necessarily need, however, all of our multifamily districts have a minimum of 50% open space. Now, they're really close at 49. However, obviously, 49 is not 50, so really, the R4E is essentially, is really needed just for that, that open space qualification, and they're very, very close to that, however, as I mentioned, they're not. So the, again, the R4E does permit a density as high as 75 units per acre. That's clearly not where they're, where they're going with that. And an R2A, for comparison, is 17 units per acre, and the project is proposing about 12 units per acre. So that gives you some comparison on the, and again, we, while open space is obviously very important to the planners, as well as the adjacent residents and the future residents of this development, there is, again, significant amount of open space throughout this, throughout the location, as well as it is adjacent to, you know, parks in a large nature area right across, directly across Silo Church. So we do, I want to make sure I covered all my important, important points. So again, we do feel, staff does feel that the R4E is consistent with the single-family attached land use recommendation that's in the existing comprehensive land use plan. That recommendation is, it's a little bit old, but again, it is the relevant, that is the applicable, while until we have a new comprehensive plan, that is the recommendation. And it was pointed out that, again, it calls out the site specific as site one, which is a mix of office, but then eventually is transitioning to single-family attached, which is what, what staff would consider this. So I believe that kind of, I believe that summarizes the key points that I wanted to touch on. Again, there is a development agreement. Within that development agreement, there is the, we did add the requirement for it to be an all-electric facility, so. Mr. Garber, gosh, I really wanted Mr. Garber to be here tonight, but, okay, so, just for him. So with the result of, other than that, staff is obviously recommending approval of the annexation, the site plan, as well as the rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. We miss you, Mr. Garber. And thank you for the great summary there. We're going to move on to public hearing. This is an opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on this item. We'll first hear from those present and then remote participants. To speak remotely, please press *9 if on the phone or use the raise hand feature in Zoom, and for phone access, please call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name if available, and you'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak. Please ensure you're in a quiet area, immunity background noises. For all participants, please state your name and your address at the beginning of your comments, and we will go with those that are first present. Welcome.
I apologize. I forgot my hearing aids. I'm missing some of the instructions.
Oh, all good, sir.
But I appreciate the few minutes we have.
Of course.
I'm not going to rehash what we've put in print already. I have filed four different statements of position. As this matter evolved, the things changed. The most recent was yesterday. The important documents, I believe, are in October, statement and yesterday's. This is not, this shouldn't be as complicated as it seems. This is not about density. What's density? Is it good enough? Do we love density? Is it, is it all our, is problem solved? That's not the question. Has nothing to do with affordability. Initially, it was confused, because the R4E, according to the Unified Development Code, belongs in a transit corridor. I didn't know what that was even. It took a long time to figure out, but this is not a transit corridor. It's not even near a transit corridor. Staff took the position that that was intentional, or this is a matter of intent, it's not binding. And it may, they may be right, but staff said, so long as the petitioner's plan is consistent with policy and goals of the city, and that's where there's a problem. As recently as October, November, the Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan unveiled and displayed and discussed the map for the city going forward. Our area, this entire area that we're discussing, is going to be low-rise residential. And low-rise means no more- And low-rise means no more than 35 feet, according to the comprehensive plan as it now sits. And it also means consistent with neighboring buildings. The site plan fails right there. That's strike one, for sure. More importantly, in my mind, the Unified Development Code also says an R4E plan must take into consideration minimizing the impact on the neighbors. This fails miserably. These big, tall buildings are out of sight. Tim mentioned moving buildings a little further away. In my own personal case, one of those buildings ended up right behind my deck. It got closer, not further away, but that's beside the point. I believe Robertson has failed miserably in its requirement to minimize impact. We are not anti, do I have a minute?
That's actually the three-minute timer, but I'll allow 30 more seconds.
Thank you. We're not against Robertson. We're not against multifamily. We're against this unsightly operation that is going to instruct, it's going to obstruct light, it's going to obstruct air. Again, in our papers, I have said, this is a form of trespass, the very sort of thing that the city council outlawed with holiday lights. In any event, I took another look today at the Waters Road project, and it's just as frightening as I thought it was when I first looked at it. These buildings are huge. They do not belong on this section of Syo Church Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else present that would like to speak at this time? Welcome.
My name's Rich Fine. I guess today, because I know Ken, I could be Ken Garber Lite, so. Probably a little kinder here. I'll forewarn you about that. But I'm an Ann Arbor resident. I'm chair of the Efficiency and Electrification Action Team for the Ann Arbor chapter of the Citizens Climate Lobby. I've spoken in front of this commission a couple times, in front of council as well, and primarily to object to developers who were building their projects to heat with gas instead of with heat pumps. Well, today, this evening, I'm here instead of to object, to finally support. So, Robertson Brothers is planning for all of the units at 75 South Main to be all-electric using air-source heat pumps. We want to express our appreciation to them for embracing an all-electric approach. They are joining a group of other forward-thinking, climate-conscious developers, helping to further establish a trend, expressing confidence that full electrification is not only better for the climate, it also makes sense economically. Robertson Brothers has provided me with a list of heat pump models that are on their shortlist to be used. I've reviewed them, and they are within the range of higher efficiency, higher performance models. So, they're not only avoiding burning more methane, thank goodness, but they're also helping their buyers, the missing middle buyers, to save on their utility bills. We, we hope that Robertson Brothers will be using this to promote the benefits of modern, efficient, all-electric homes when they're marketing their properties. But we also encourage them to make full electrification their standard in all future developments, both in Ann Arbor and elsewhere. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers that would like to publicly comment at this time? Seeing none, do we have any remote callers, Mr. Leonard?
We do. May our audio system bless us. Adam Duskevich, you have three minutes to address the Planning Commission.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Hi, this is Adam Duskevich calling from 1430 Las Vegas Drive in the Fourth Ward. I live in the nearby Dickon neighborhood and attended the initial neighborhood meeting for this development a year or so ago. At that meeting, both myself and Commissioner Weiss noted the lack of a sidewalk to Ann Arbor-Seline Road, and I'm glad to see that petitioner has added that essential connection. It would have been a real shame to build something here without it, as it connects future residents to bushes and the other nearby businesses at Woodland Plaza, as well as bus lines that run along Ann Arbor-Seline and South Main. With that connection now in the site plan, I support this development. The scale of this project is entirely appropriate for the area. It adds much-needed housing in an area that is close to daily needs, jobs, schools, and several bus routes. The vitality added to the Main/Syo Church/Ann Arbor-Seline area between this and the forthcoming Arbor-on-Main development can only make this site of town a better place to live. I look forward to it. I do want to make a more general point, though, about this. How can the city make it clear to developers that it is important to us in Ann Arbor to prioritize walkability earlier in the process? The sidewalk connection is such a clear advantage of this site, and I hope we can figure out a way to make it more clear to developers that pedestrian access is a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other callers?
Caller with the phone number ending with 1-8-5. You can press *6 to unmute your phone. Go ahead, caller.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead.
Yes, my name's Eric Kaluskin. I own the house at 521 Lambeth Drive in Landtown subdivision. And I have a question. The drawings show that the sanitary sewage from the development will connect to an existing sanitary sewer at the southwest corner of the property. And then, from there, it looks like the sanitary sewage will flow down Port Estad and Lambeth in Landtown subdivision. So, my question is, during a heavy rainstorm early in the mornings when the sanitary system is heavily used, will the additional sanitary sewage from 75 townhouses flood in the basements and the Woolworth Line homes at Landtown?
This is not like a Q&amp;A portion, but we will, do you have any other comments associated with the capacity of the sanitary? If not, we will be certain to ask that question during the discussion portion. Is there anything else you would like to add? Is he still there?
On to the next caller.
Yes, thank you.
Emily Marlowe, you can unmute and address the Planning Commission for up to three minutes.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Awesome. I truly appreciate the time and effort each of you have dedicated to listening to the concerns of our Audubon Drive community. Your support means a lot to us, and it makes a difference as we work together, as we strengthen our community. Thank you for being attentive and caring. When you live, where you live can significantly impact your well-being. But the reason goes beyond climate and scenery. Factors like community connections, access to health care, environmental quality, and economic stability all play critical roles in shaping both happiness and health. Research has shown living in supportive, safe, resource-rich environments promotes mental and physical well-being, while areas of high stressors and limited resources can have opposite effect. Understanding how you, how your location affects your overall location and quality of life guides decisions where you live in optimal health and happiness. And that was something that I pulled from the internet. But the reason why I want to say that is because I truly, I want you all to understand that I have lived in multiple, large city areas throughout my life. And I want to ensure that Ann Arbor remains a place where we can all thrive. As someone in health care, I am deeply invested in our community, and I have genuine concerns about this proposal and how it aligns with our established city policies and current community. I'm not sure if you all read our letters that we have submitted in the past couple of days, but I am going to briefly review what we have stated. Unified Development Code clearly designates RF4 zoning for transit corridor. Since SP 24007 is located outside of these areas, the application of RF4 zoning appears to be an inappropriate fit for this project. Number two, the future land use map established by Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee explicitly identifies our area, West South Main and South Syo Church, as a low-rise residential permitting building as a maximum height of 35 feet. The proposed structures are 40 feet, contradicting these established guidelines and should be revised to meet the community standards. Impact on adjacent properties.
30 more seconds.
Must minimize impact on adjacent properties and mandate that the Unified Development Code, that current policy fails to adequately address established, considering that we are required to incorporate two-story buildings along shared property lines. Did I meet my three minutes? I can stop.
Eight more seconds.
Okay. And lastly, I just want to say that, oh, I had some notes from what you all talked about. The road to come on Audubon, on ours, we are private property, so that was not an option. Number two, we have asked to have two stories on the adjacent sides. We're not against what you, what they're representing, but we just want to make sure you're not impacting our livelihood and our well-being. Number three, the electric and waste needs not to be on the adjacent lines, because that will impact our livelihood. Sorry, I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Do we have other callers?
Caller with the phone number ending with 297. You can press *6 to unmute your phone and address the Planning Commission for up to three minutes. Go ahead, caller.
Hello?
Hello, we can hear you.
This is Daniel Atkins. I live in the Meadows Association adjacent to the country place, which is adjacent to the proposed project. I have three brief points. The first is that the Meadows Association fully supports the objections that have been raised by two of the residents and feel that the density and height is inappropriate. Second, we understand there is a precedent in other Robertson projects for building lower units at the boundary of adjacent properties. And we would encourage the Planning Commission to require Robertson to do that in this case. And thirdly, I remind the Planning Commission that the city has approved a very high-density project just across the street, the Valhalla Project. I believe it has a different name now. That project, as we tried to point out, has very problematic traffic patterns, which are going to lead to more and more congestion at that Syo Main Street. And this project will further exacerbate that situation. So, we would encourage the Planning Commission to require a traffic study before fully approving this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Other callers?
CMAC Moshiiri, you can unmute and address the Planning Commission for up to three minutes. CMAC Moshiiri, you can unmute on Zoom and address the Planning Commission.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
We can, but you might mute your phone or your laptop.
Yes, okay. So, I'll go quickly. I'm a resident of the Audubon as well. Actually, Tim, who spoke first, is adjacent to my house, and I'm here with my wife to raise a couple of points. My first point is the traffic statement, which is listed in the second attachment to this meeting agenda. Item number six is the traffic statement. That traffic statement, when I reviewed those numbers and model of transportation, seems not logical, so I would like the developer to provide the assumptions, what are behind those numbers, because 278 vehicle trips per day is assumed. And when I look at the AM peak hours and PM peak hours and with the consideration of the entry and exit to this development, being Syo Church, and Syo Church knowingly is a one-lane street, those numbers does not add up to the amount of traffic going in and out of that site. So, first of all, I question those numbers. And then, my wife also has a couple of points that she will mention here.
Yeah, I would just thank you, everyone. I would like to echo everyone's sentiments on the zoning specifically of the R4E. I think we can all agree, and there's multiple platforms where the community is not super happy about the amount of condos that are being developed. And I think, simply put, it would be nice to have less condos and more, less three-story, four-story buildings. I have also lived in many areas throughout the United States, and I feel like we're becoming Houston or something like that. I understand the density concern. My objection is just the R4E.
Thank you.
And that's, thank you.
Thank you. Other callers?
Caller with the phone number ending with 417. You can press *6 to unmute your phone and address the Commission for up to three minutes. Go ahead.
My name is David Leichman, and can you hear me?
Yes.
You can.
Okay. I'm also an Audubon resident, and I just want to put a little bit more detail on the traffic issues that folks have been talking about, because I think it's really important to understand that where Syo Church meets Main Street is the main thoroughfare from 94 and the shopping areas for not just our street, not just Syo Church, but the entire neighborhood around the stadium, right? All of those houses, that's how they get to 94. It's the main thoroughfare, the downtown, the downtown Main Street area from 94. And when you combine the 150 cars that are going to be in this development proposed with the, something like 1,000 cars, right? Because it's 450 units and the Valhalla, right? The amount of stress that you're going to be putting on, additional stress, the intersections at Main and Stadium, and Main and Syo Church is enormous, especially at rush hour times. And I don't think any of the traffic studies that have been done either for the Valhalla or this development take both of those developments into account, in particular because the Valhalla, as we understand it, the only avenue of egress or ingress, in and out of that 450-unit development, is going to be on Main Street, right near the Syo Church intersection. And those folks are only going to be able to leave going towards downtown, away from 94. They're going to have to either make a U-turn in Pioneer High School or go around on Stadium to 7th Street onto Syo Church to get to 94, right? Because they can only go out. Because they can only go out one direction. And, you know, if you think all these people are going to be taking the bus, that is totally unrealistic. And I just think you have to really take into consideration, you know, people getting in and out of town because it is already bad. And then the other point I want to make is with 450 units coming to Valhalla, you're now going to add 75 units here. How much of a market in Ann Arbor is there for 450,000 to $550,000 houses, okay, that are not, don't have a yard? There's, I don't think there's really been a study showing there's a market for this many, you know, basically, upper-middle-class residences in Ann Arbor. And, you know.
That's three minutes, sir.
Let's do one at a time.
Thank you.
Let's see if Valhalla actually works, and then you could approve something like this.
Next. Do we have other callers? Thank you.
No other hands are raised. Give it a little bit longer, just to make sure that everyone has a chance. Laura McGinn, you have up to three minutes to address the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to add that the proposed development is all-electric, which is, you know, laudable. However, there is no opportunity there for solar power because of these roof decks which make the fourth level on the buildings. And it totally forecloses any opportunity for the residents of Audubon to explore solar opportunity, which the residents of Mara Place, Mara Drive, the Meadows have already installed. So while it's all-electric, it's putting a strain on the grid, which is a problem with DTE, as we all know in the city. And it just forecloses, because of the height of the building, it forecloses any opportunity for Audubon to explore any solar power. That's the only comment. I echoed the other sentiment and comments that the Audubon and the Country Place and Meadows residents have.
Thank you. Any other callers?
No other hands raised.
Okay. All right. With that, I'm going to close public comment. Okay, so I'm going to read the proposed motions. There are three, and please keep in mind, as this is a rezoning, this does not stop here. We are just recommending to City Council for three items again, which is the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission recommends that the mayor and city council approve the 255, 315, and 371 Saco Church Road, 2180 Ann Arbor-Saline Road Site Plan and Development Agreement. That's motion number one. Motion number two, the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission recommends that the mayor and city council approve the 255, 315, and 371 Saco Church Road and 2180 Ann Arbor-Saline Road rezoning from township to RF4E multifamily. And then finally, the third motion is that the Ann Arbor City Planning Commission recommends that the mayor and city council approve annexation of 255, 315, 371 Saco Church Road and 2180 Ann Arbor-Saline Road. Moved by Commissioner White, seconded by Councilmember Dish. We are in discussion. Who'd like to kick us off? We have Councilmember Dish. You next.
Very quickly, briefly, I will be supporting this. Basis for my decision is that the RF4E zoning is consistent with single-family attached land-use recommendations of the Comprehensive Plan. That's what these are, single-family attached homes. We've heard a couple times that there is what I believe is a confusion about the description of RF4E zoning. I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a planner, but as I understand it, the descriptions of these zoning districts are statements of intent in the UDC. Oh. They are.
Eight more seconds, Councilmember Dish.
They are not restrictive. So there is no implication that you can only use the RF4E zoning as described. We make our determinations about this based on appropriateness with context. And as Mr. Kowalski, Planner Kowalski explained, the density that is proposed for this project is actually less than what's permitted by surrounding zoning. In terms of the height, three stories next to, you know, one- and two-story, single-family homes is not a giant jump. And two more points. One is that some references to the upcoming Comprehensive Land Use Plan have been made, and prospectively, the concept of the low-rise residential, that's a debatable question, what that is going to be as a limit. 35 is one possibility, but we on this commission already have had a discussion of whether that's where we want it to be or not. And so that is not yet known, and 35 should not be taken as a definite number. It may end up being a range as well. And the Transportation Review states that the project is expected to produce 20 additional trips on the transportation system in the morning and 25 in the afternoon. This level of trip generation doesn't trigger a traffic study, and we don't do those when they aren't triggered. So my considerations are that I think the zoning is appropriate and correct and consistent with the surroundings and with the surrounding zoning, adjacent zoning, and that this project meets significant city goals, which I do believe there is a market for housing that is less than half a million dollars in Ann Arbor because there's really not very much of it. And the all-electric project is fantastic, and we are working with a proven developer here who has brought us sustainability innovations on other projects. Well, and I'm sorry, I'm not sick, I'm just.
It's late.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can. Thank you, Councilmember Dish. Other commissioners?
Can I just clarify? Did I miss a motion? Are you taking these motions all together or are you just discussing generally before you get to motions? I just wanted to check.
I actually read the motions all together.
Okay. All right. Did anybody move or second yet?
Yes.
Who were those? I'm sorry, I missed that note.
I think it was White motioned and then Commissioner, Councilmember Dish.
Thank you very much. My apologies.
I'm pretty sure. Let the record go. Please correct me if I'm wrong. Okay. And then Commissioner White.
Great. So first of all, thank you so much for bringing this development. It's in my neighborhood. It is 900 feet from my house. I welcome the 75 new neighbors. In fact, my first question wasn't going to be about the parking. It was going to be, why didn't you propose more than 75 units in this six-acre development?
But your second question was parking. We think this is the right product. I heard the question about the market study. We think this is the right product. We have skinnier ones. Could we get a few more? I guess, I think we just felt this location really fit the product that we are proposing here. So I hear you. In fact, we had less before and we got as many as we could. And I know that doesn't sound good for the neighborhood, but it is something that we were conscious about trying to fit everything on there. So it's really, it's a jigsaw puzzle, and that's what we were able to get on the site.
Following up from there, I do want to really thank you for putting in the sidewalk and working with the engineers. As a previous caller mentioned, I was a part of the community meeting, and before I had to jump off to come to Planning Commission, I asked in the chat for you all to consider that, and it's great that it's on the plan. I do just want to note that there will be a goat trail from where the sidewalk juts up to the sidewalk because no one's going to go up and then turn left and then right. So maybe if it is city-owned land or something, we can make it more hospitable goat trail.
Yeah, I don't mean to interrupt you. I think there's a lot of grade there, which is why we did that. So you're probably right, but yeah, I mean, we look at that in engineering.
The other thing that I wanted to ask you about, and it seems like the Audubon community is not amenable to this, but I imagine families will move in and those kids will be zoned for law, and I do believe not the downtown school because I think it crosses the street. Is that correct?
I don't, I should know that. I usually know that later on in the process. I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that means they're going to walk, I know Audubon residents are zoned for law, and so I can't imagine that the district would make that adjacent group go there. So that's our neighborhood elementary school. And currently, families that live in the Mara Drive complex, they go through the backyards of other neighbors to cut into the neighborhood because it is a long walk around Saco Church to get to either Chaucer or to Seventh to go. So if there are any opportunities to talk with those HOAs about at least making walking paths for kids and especially in the early morning, making those paths lit, because there are foxes in our neighborhood as well as our wild turkeys and the deer. And so just whatever we can to open up that space so that kids could move freely through the neighborhood. They're going to do it anyway unless there's a fence that they have to mount, and even then that might be an obstacle that they try to advance over. And then finally, I think it is important that you clear up the parking because when I saw that you had 167 parking spaces, I really did lose my ever-loving mind. And then I realized, oh, no, these are the ones that are inside the garage. And so just noting that there are only 17 surface parking when others see it, I think it would be great. So all in all, I'm glad that you're bringing this to the neighborhood. I welcome these new neighbors. I'm grateful that this space is being turned into housing, and I think the families that will be able to live here will be appreciative of your development. So thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to go to, I think it was Commissioner Mills and then Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
I'll let other.
We'll go to Commissioner Hammerschmidt, and then we'll go to Commissioner Wetherbee. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I echo a lot of what has been said previously. I have several specific, but I think quick questions. How tall are these buildings?
Okay, that's a great question. So let me move this up here. And it's hard, I didn't give elevation. You do have.
And I didn't dig enough to, yeah, sorry.
You have your plans, but you have to add them up, so I did it elsewhere. So it's to the top of the parapet at the tallest point. Let me get it before I go on the record. And I had it right here, as a matter of fact, and I don't. It is 30, I better tell you exactly what it is. I'm sorry. At least the phones are working, right?
Yeah, why didn't you look this up during that really long break that we had?
I was. I just, I thought I remembered it, and I don't want to be wrong. Okay, so to the top of the highest part of the parapet here, we've got a 30, it's essentially 36 and a half feet.
Okay.
And then to the midpoint, and I know it's been brought up, with the rooftop deck, there's a kind of a shed, and it's shown on your architecture plans there, but there's sort of a shed opening, which by the way, is on the opposite side of the edge of the building, so it's not where people, you know, our adjacent homes are. The midpoint of that is 40, it's under 40 feet, it's 39. So it's just a few more feet than what the parapet is. And again, it's on the inset of where the unit is as opposed to the edge, corner edge of the building.
Is that rooftop back an option? Or is it?
I would say most people take that.
Okay. I have more comments about that later, but just curious for those, the numbers. Okay. I mean, I guess I'll just say this, and then I'll go to my more specific questions, just based on some of the feedback we got. I fully believe that this plan, like, and I do have specific questions, but in many ways creates a healthy neighborhood, what that one caller was reading, like, this to me meets a lot of that. I mean, we're creating more housing in a place that has walkable access to grocery stores, to schools, to other retail. You're building new construction that conceivably is not going to cost a million dollars. Housing costs put undue stress on people trying to afford a home, which creates health issues. And then I could argue that the lack of appetite for the connectivity to the adjacent neighborhoods creates these little, like, enclaves of islands that really don't foster broader community and connectivities. I, all of this to say, I'm very supportive of this project, and I think that you're doing a lot of things that we want to be seeing in Ann Arbor. I think the scale is appropriate. I mean, if you're thinking about, you know, I heard a lot of, like, we asked them to take it down to two stories. A two-story, 1,600-square-foot, three-bed, two-bed, three-bed, two-bath home needs a larger footprint, so it would be less open space, it would be fewer units. Like, I like what you've done here. There is a huge appetite for this size and the price point that I'm assuming that you're looking for based on the size. Okay, here are my specific questions. Agreed with a lot of your product highlights. I want a couple of clarifications. Housing options for residents that are underserved, was that in reference to the missing middle that you talked about?
It is, yeah. I mean, again, we would not have spent as much time and money on this if we think there's not a market for that. So yeah, when I talk about missing middle, I am talking about people that really can't afford a single-family home.
Yep. No, I get it. I've been using, like, attainable housing.
I use that as well. I use that as well. Yeah, I agree.
Okay, walkable and inviting. So I think the western side of your site accomplishes that, and I totally appreciate this is a really hard site to do, and there's constraints to the fire, and they make things harder. I really like, for example, the little, like, the buildings, or the numbers, like, seven through 12, they face 13 through 18, it looks like, and it creates, like, a little pocket there, and then further down the site, as you move, I guess, east, it feels like it's more cut off, especially those ones, like, along the, they don't face each other. I'm going to ask questions that I think I know the answer to, but could that road, are those two curb cuts existing, the existing curb cuts?
No.
They're not. Could the road shift east and you have it behind the other two, so that you're creating another little, like, you turn the front doors the other way? I'm just looking for, like, how do you make this more of like a, I mean, don't go and redesign your whole site based on this necessarily. I'm just, like, these are the, I'm like, part of it looks walkable and inviting, and like, there's these little green spaces, and then I move over here, and I'm kind of like, oh, you've got these, like, facing nobody.
So look, if I can explain it, yeah. Essentially, we thought about doing that. So you would basically have the rear of these homes along this road, and we just felt that was not a good look. So that was sort of the impetus for that. And then we'd have another road back here, so it's additional impervious surface. The other part of this is you have to have a certain distance behind the units for fire. It's called a lay-down requirement. So that's why there's more pavement here. We don't want to do that. We were able to avoid it pretty much everywhere else, but it really factors into the site plan design. So that's, those things I'm talking about, the jigsaw puzzle, that's a big, we start with that, to be honest, is the lay-down requirements for fire. So it really dictates how this is built. I fully see it now, what you're talking about. I don't think there's much we could do. We would move this back if we could. We just, we have to have that separation for fire to basically lay down and put their ladders to get to the top of the roof.
And you have no other room on the east because of the property line?
I tried to buy that property. I'd love to.
Maybe someday, and then you can create more units facing them. Why is there a gate at the top of that road?
So that's a good question. That's an emergency vehicle access gate. So that does not suffice for the second point of access. We're over 30 units, so we need a second point of access, but because of the distance from that, there's not enough, I don't have enough width to have two entrances, and I have nowhere else to connect. So that does not meet our second access, but it does meet the requirement for having an extra-long road or drive here. So if I didn't have that here, this would be too long of a drive. So it's, we'd love that to count as a second, the emergency access, but we're going to have to fire suppress these because of that, which is an extra 20,000 a unit or so. But we still do need it because of the over-length driveway. So I know that's a long explanation, but it's another fire requirement.
Okay. So that is not how these people will access their drives?
Correct. It'll be closed. Yes.
Okay. I promised I was done.
That was a good question.
How do you get up to the roof deck? Because I didn't see stairs up.
It's a different, yeah, there's a.
It's a different layout?
There's a, yes, there's another layout, and it essentially wraps, this wraps around in a U.
Okay.
So you lose a little bit of closet here, but yeah, it works for sure.
I am going to agree with the last caller that I wish that there was solar instead of a roof deck. I'll just say that. I feel like that is a missed opportunity. That's my biggest negative comment about this. Okay, the connection, I saw that where the connection to Audubon would have been at the bottom.
Yeah. Yeah.
What do you think about a sidewalk or path? Because there, I mean, it's too like stub outs. And there's, you're gonna have a goat trail there too.
Yeah, so a couple, I guess a couple of things on that. That's actually a good comment. I don't know if they want that. They probably don't. And I don't think they have sidewalks there if I can't, I can't remember, but I don't think they do. There's a lot of grade, so I don't know if I can meet ADA to begin with. And then it's going in, which was sort of my rant before, right into the back of a solid waste enclosure, which by the way would be great open space or maybe a couple parking spaces if we can get them more. But it would basically run right into that, so.
So that was my next point, I think. Um, no, it's not, but I'm gonna move there. So are you gonna, is this just an issue for trash or is this like a trash and recycling issue?
Both.
Okay. So I, I'm on the development team for Veridian over like on Platte. We, we have smaller carts. The city picks them up. They're like two-yard dumpsters. I don't know if that was discussed. I don't know if this is something from like seven years ago that was negotiated. That's way before my time. But like, we have a different, we don't have one dumpster. We have smaller carts. I mean, they're not tiny and there's, oops, they're distributed throughout the site.
I'm, I'm really-
Yeah, I was gonna say, Tim's probably biting his lip on this one. I, I should jump in on here. So the solid waste denied any, they will not approve a plan with individual carts here. They-
But they're not individual. They're shared.
No, there's no, this is the only plan that would be approvable by solid waste, is the dumpsters. Believe me, the developer went back and forth without solid waste. Now, there has been other projects that have done it in other ways. And including one that, from the developer himself, that in the villages, that has not been built yet, but was approved with the caveat of if the dumpsters don't work, you go back in there and do the carts kind of, or no, I think it was-
It's the other way around.
It's a reverse. The carts don't work, they go in there and do the dumpsters. Our solid waste, we had extensive discussions involving our solid waste staff all the way up to the very top and including legal representation because this was going back and forth. Our solid waste policies and codes and guidelines now do not support individual carts for development of this size. They will not recommend approval for that. They have had issues while it's been done on projects in the past. Our solid waste staff is telling us they've had numerous issues with this. It, they don't, there are also, there's issues with backing up, as you can see, from those, there would-
That is true, yes.
There'd be a hundred and fifty individual carts lining the road. They've looked through all the options and it, believe me-
We had a plan that showed exactly how they could pick it up.
They had a plan. They originally tried to go forward with that plan to, to provide exactly, similar to what you're saying, all different kinds of options. However, this is the only plan that our solid waste, looking with both the franchise haulers well as what solid waste staff has and using experience in the past, they're looking at our codes and guidelines and saying, this requires dumpsters. So I would say like this, our, their codes, policies, guidelines are requiring dumpsters.
Fire and trash, that's how we get on anyone.
That's kind of the, so it's interesting, we're gonna have to touch on that one anyway.
I feel there is a path forward, as I mentioned, with the development agreement, which again, I don't know if that's your purview, but I think it's something you put on the record if you're supportive of that.
I would have to jump in because yes, you probably in theory could. However, I was telling you, solid waste staff is absolutely not going to recommend.
Yeah.
They're going directly against that, so they are, yes.
Okay, we'll hit Commissioner White really quickly because it's on that and then we'll go to Commissioner Weatherby.
So what's the barrier, oh, what's the barrier to the HOA having a private pickup? Why, why do we as the city prohibit them from doing that?
The city, I don't know if Brett has additional comments, but I know enough to say the city has a contract license holder. You can't go to individual, because otherwise you could have individual developments contracting out solid waste here or there.
A lot of communities set up franchise agreements so you don't end up with numerous vendors tearing up roads with numerous trucks down the same area. So communities do make those types of judgments. But in short, if you wanted more information than that, we, I would invite the solid waste team to come and talk to you about some of those requirements at this point. Despite, you know, our desire, we have, I appreciate the petitioner has worked to deliver a site plan to you. In turn, we are bringing to you that our staff who have reviewed our code requirements have said, we can service this. And they have not, prior to this version, been able to find a, a plan that they could, they could commit to servicing trash and recycling from.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have two more quick things. If ever this trash gets solved and that does not become dumpsters. I mean, I would just, I would encourage, I guess, the neighboring, the adjacent communities, this is a good connect. You're putting the sidewalk into Ann Arbor Celine. Like, I don't see a way for them to, for like neighboring communities to access that like with a, you know, legal sidewalk path other than just kind of like cutting through yards. Like, I think that would be a huge benefit for other people. And then this is just sort of a general, like, with all this development and maybe this is something for next year's CIP. It'd be great for a crosswalk across Syo Church so that people in these neighboring developments could cross it safely.
Oh, Syo Church, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Syo Church, yep. Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Hammersmith. Commissioner Weatherby?
Okay, so a couple things. So number one, seventy-five South Main. It's not. It's not seventy-five South Main. And as someone who lives on South Main, you'll end up with a lot of people at the PNC Bank downtown and presumably you're playing off of the twelve oh one South Main? Because it is not on South Main and seventy-five is not the number.
The explanation.
And I can't see that fire or emergency services are gonna be okay with this.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not in marketing. I, I understand the concern. I actually have the same concern. Obviously, there's seventy-five units, that's the seventy-five, and then South Main is closer north. Yep, it's nearby. You know, that's not-
It could be seventy-five stadium or three hundred and fifty-two stadium.
So, you know, if that's a sticking point. But, but yeah, I mean, that's the name that I, I think we like for it just because it is, yes, it's close to Main Street and it's got seventy-five units. That is how our marketing team came up with it. That's, that's, that's the explanation.
I just, honestly, I think somebody's gonna die because of it. Like, honestly.
Okay.
This is a, it's a safety thing. I know that fire don't, that they don't like, if somebody calls emergency and says they're at seventy-five South Main, you absolutely will not get people to this development. And I think it's a really important issue.
Let me bring it to our team. I understand.
I just, you know, you can say stadium view if you want to bring in the South Main thing. It's hallway stadium, but nonetheless. But like seventy-five South Main is just wrong. And, and it's a little bit of a joke, but it's also really serious.
Yeah, I understand.
Because if somebody calls about that and if there's somebody who's new to the area and doesn't know the road and just, it's just wrong. There is a seventy-five South Main and it's not this. It's not even close.
Okay, understood.
That is something that I feel very strongly about. Okay, so the next thing is, I appreciate that people don't want connectivity. This is less your issue than a city issue. This whole area is a mess of unconnected pieces.
It is.
And it's causing problem for fire. It causes problem for solid waste. And I think we're filling up this chunk, but I think we see why we don't want to do unconnected areas in the future. So that's, again, it's not really your issue, but it's problematic. The sidewalks here, lovely sidewalks, they don't connect to anything. So like, if you, I mean, maybe if you're coming down the center aisle, then you could get to Ann Arbor Celine Road. But like, behind number seventy-five, the sidewalk ends, behind thirty-four, the sidewalk. The sidewalk goes through behind thirty-four, but it doesn't go through behind thirty-three. So it's just, I, I really appreciate that you have the sidewalk to Ann Arbor Celine, but the internal sidewalks don't all connect to that sidewalk. So that's just a thing to think about.
We can look at that.
These are less sidewalks than they are front entrances or rear entrances. They're not really sidewalks. They're just paths to the doors.
Okay.
So there's that. And then garbage collection, I think that's just gonna be a problem because there's no connectivity. So you're gonna either have garbage trucks backing up, I mean, it's gonna be a mess of beeping and crashing and I guess that's, that's what it is. Sewage issues, somebody brought up the sewage issues and I think there's maybe someone from the city who could talk about-
I mean, I can address it in a, in a general sense, just like all, all projects that have, that come before you in council ultimately. They do provide sanitary sewer calculations. Those are, they, they're modeled. We have a sanitary sewer modeling system to make sure that there is no undue, no downstream impacts. As many of you may be aware, this area was plagued with flooding for a while. That has for the most part been remediated by a couple. One was a development project that you guys saw many years ago, which actually wasn't built, but they did build the detention basin. So that has addressed some of the flooding scenarios in that area. So I'm not, not the flooding expert here, but I, from what I've heard, those have addressed that situation. And again, they've modeled their sanitary impacts and the city does feel that it's, we have sufficient capacity.
Can I add to that?
Yep.
So yeah, I mean, obviously adding that pond, there's nothing there now to capture it. So that just is gonna make it better just because of the storm pond. But also, there's not a combined system here. So the storm water's not gonna get into the sewer system. So some areas there is combine and that, like Royal Oak, you have some major issues. That's not the case here.
Yeah, and so that's great. And I, thanks for that. Because one of the things that it's, it, new development actually makes our water issues better in gen, for most of the things. So that's, hopefully people can take some comfort from that. And I think that's all I have to say. I do like the project. I think it's-
Thank you.
I think it's a good project and a good spot. And I do think condos are great. We don't have that many of them.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Understood. Commissioner Mills?
I also really like the project. One of the things that I have been paying a lot of attention to is when people say we're gonna do all electric, making sure that it's somewhere so it's not just talked about. And it's in the development agreement. I really love that. Thank you.
The Wolf Pack would not let us get away with it.
I, um, it is, it, then there's truth in advertising. I think that's awesome. EV chargers, I'm curious about that because it's not required by code. I'm not, um, is it like, is it shown in the site plan? Because they're significantly exceeding the charger installed. Okay.
Yes, it's, they have it both in the comparison chart and it's shown on the site plan under the parking as well, so.
Super. I couldn't see it in like the Control F thing in the PD, in the gigantic PDF. Didn't work. Okay.
But you're right, they are exceeding the requirement for the chargers.
Yeah, and within this zoning, it fits absolutely. Like, I really like the site plan. If we, if we tear these things apart, like if the motions apart, I'm all for the site plan. I think it's awesome. My question or concern is really about the zoning classification. I think this project fits. This is, in my mind, this is a place where we don't have a good zoning designation that allows for this kind of thing.
I agree with that.
Right? It's, it's like an overkill. The R four E is an overkill for what you actually have. And that's my, that's my concern. Because actually, again, I don't care about the density so much. I would welcome more. Like, that's not what I want to cap. I think unlimited height here is not something that long-term anybody would really be, really be comfortable with. And so I, well, um, I don't know that unlimited height would be, that many people be comfortable with. I think that if, if this were, if this were a hundred and twenty stories on that site, which if we rezone it as-is, there's nothing that's stopping that.
You still need to approve the site plan. It still does have to go through that process.
But by that time, it's by right. The, the rezoning is the-
And we had that same, those same conversations. There's nothing that really fits into the box. And the PUD just seemed like an overkill as well, so.
It does, which is why I'm curious. So I went through, I was like, what is the precedent for this, right? And Valhalla is the same way. And there were conditions on Valhalla. And so, and I think the only thing that gives me pause here is, is, is that part of it, that, that you're forty feet. I mean, actually, the site, the kind of staff plan said fifty feet. And I was like, totally reasonable, right? Like, awesome, great. Like, even if you wanted to give yourself cushion, I think that that's, that gives me a little bit more assurance. Because I don't know that, I'm excited that in the coming years when we have a new comprehensive plan, that if what that shows is low or medium, rise residential, like, this, I think that this is not going to be out of line. If something happens, like, who knows, right? And once it's rezoned. And so that's, I'll be just straight up with you, that's what's giving me pause on the rezoning portion of it. I love the site plan. I will, I will vote for the site plan. But I, like, as-is, that's giving me a lot of pause because I think we don't tie, and there's reasons that we don't tie the site plan to the, the zoning, but, but you're very much underbuilding within the zoning. And I think that there's lots of things that could come under the zoning that would certainly give me pause and maybe more of your neighbors' pause. So that, yeah.
Got it. Thank you. Commissioner Norton?
I like the site plan. I have really some serious trouble with rezoning it in a way that would create by right the ability to build an unlimited height building. The Michigan Zoning Enabling Act enables conditional zoning, but we can't offer conditions. Only the developer can offer conditions. So we can't sit here and say, if you put this condition on it, we'll approve this. But I, I would have serious reservations about approving this zoning district, given that it would, you could decide tomorrow, you know what, the market really would support a fifty-story building and there's nothing that would prevent it because we're gonna, we'll have, be able to do that by right. I'm not suggesting that you would do that, but that's the way the law would work. So that's, it's problematic to rezone this as a, as this designation that would allow that kind of development as it's been proposed. I'll put that on the table. I like the site plan. I think it fits really well with this, in what you're trying to do. I have real reservations about unconditioned rezoning that would allow something way bigger to go in by right once the zoning's been made.
I'm not suggesting it. For the record, I'm not-
Telling you that if you put a condition on here, we'll approve it because we're not allowed to do that under the MZA. But I'm, but I have reservations about this, this zoning action.
Obviously careful on how I ask this, but I, I think, you know, from our perspective, we want to build this project. And this was the vehicle to do that. So, you know, I think we're, we're willing to, to do what we need to, to move forward with this specific development if that's something that, that, you know, the city's looking for. We just felt that, you know, the R four A and R four B, just to hit the sixty percent of whatever it is, just was, was very onerous. And the PUD just had such additional things that, that wouldn't really make sense. So I, listen, I think we're amenable to that. It's, it's, we do not want to switch up and show you something different later. So we're, I think, would be comfortable if that's a, you know, conversation, maybe that's at the council level. But we're, I understand I had those same concerns and we're, we're, we want to build this project and that's how we'd like to move forward.
Do we have other commissioner comments?
Okay, I guess I think the vast majority of my notes have been mostly covered, which had to do with a lot of the public comments regarding sanitary, that I think wastewater was covered already. I do want to emphasize the importance of coordinating CIP in the future with land use and transportation infrastructure. So again, thinking through connectivity of crosswalks or a rapid flashing sign on Syo Church. I legitimately think actually you guys covered everything. So the only item that I would actually mention is that the R four E, and I do want to clarify, I pulled up the UDC specifically because I heard a few public comments on R four E's appropriateness and the necessity of being on a transit corridor. I'm just gonna read the language. R four E multiple-family dwelling district is intended to permit high-density multiple-family development along signature transit corridors as identified in the city's master plan. I would, with nearby access to public land, schools, shops, and personal services outside the DDA boundary. And so I think that there's an intent to permit high-density along signature transit corridors. I would actually argue that Ann Arbor Celine Road is a fairly large vehicular thoroughfare. From that standpoint, there is access to schools, shops, personal services and connectivity from that standpoint. So I do want to give credence to everybody that spoke on it, so I do want to recognize that. But also, just my pure reading of the UDC, it's the intent behind it and I think the signature transit corridor, I don't know that it meant specifically TC one or it's a, or a capitalized term. or a capitalized term that has a specific tether definition within the UDC, but I do want to, again, give credence, we hear you. I think my reading of it's slightly different. I also want to address shadow casting with respect to, because I think the last comment was actually on solar, or the prohibition of solar, basically saying, hey, you're killing our sunlight to a certain extent. Just taking a look at, you know, the, the kind of optimal time for solar to happen is going to be kind of at that noon time, and so if you look at the orientation of the overall site on Audubon, like I see rises in the east and towards kind of like the between 11 and 3 o'clock time period, I feel like there's actually going to be sufficient amount of light that still hits any sites that are even to the west of it. And so, just wanted to think through from that standpoint. Again, I just want to give recognition for the folks that spoke here. It's, we do really appreciate the comments, and I want to make sure that we're responding to them thoroughly, and I think the rest of the commission's done a strong job in covering those. I share the concern about R4E's unlimited height as well. There is, but as my former law professor actually noted, there's, per the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act, that's not something that we can necessarily create conditions. But nevertheless, I think this is an appropriate site plan for that portion. Any other thoughts before we put this to a vote?
Well, to make my point clear, I am in favor of the annexation. I'm in favor of the site plan. I don't think I can vote to recommend the rezoning, given my concern about the fact that that would by right allow now a much larger project to be built by right without any constrictions, and so I can't, I can't see recommending that that's a good thing to the city council to do.
Got it. And then procedurally speaking, what would it take? This is a question to staff about actually taking now. I mean, we started the motions on a together basis.
That's what I was going to say. I made the motion, so I can withdraw the motion, and then we can take them one at a time. And then those who want to vote against the R4E could vote against it, and then that way, we don't kill the whole thing because you still need to vote now.
Okay.
So I'm happy to withdraw my motion, but Councilmember Dish has to agree, and she's exiting. Okay.
Okay. So, thank you for the discussion, and we have now-
So I withdraw my motion the second agreed, so you can retake it one at a time.
Okay, so I am now going to introduce the petition, but I'm going to, we're going to do it individually.
Don't want to say something.
I'm sorry, petitioner, would you like to?
Yeah, I guess I just, I'd like clarification on what that exactly means then. So, I mean, obviously, the annexation, from a time standpoint, is what I need to move forward with quickly. I don't know what that means if it, there's no recommendation for zoning, so haven't really, non-attorney. Sorry, there we go. So, right, the annexation can proceed, obviously, because we can't zone it anyway until it comes back from the state. So that would just kind of be hanging out there. So there, there's a couple of options with that. If the annexation could be approved, go forward. The site plan, though, would, would not. We wouldn't want to, you know, push forward the site plan without a zoning. There's also an option, staff can, can work with the petitioner if the petitioner is, you know, offers anything. Whoops, shouldn't swing my hand. Sorry. If the petitioner is willing to work with staff on any kind of that conditional range, that can be something that can be added between planning commission and council with, with the, obviously, the, the feedback from the planning commission. That planning commission, you know, if the condition was offered, planning commission did support that condition with that rezoning going to council. So that could be added after planning commission approval to go forward, and that would be renoticed at the plant, at city council, that would include a conditional rezoning. And then that, again, remember, the annexation takes a little while to state, and then when that comes back, we, we will connect the site plan and the zoning that would go to council.
So, to be perfectly clear, what I'm hearing is that if we took these three separately, the site plan and development, if the, so the annexation can be recommended for approval, that I think is pretty clear. However, in the event that we were not to support the rezoning from township to R4E, then the recommendation to approve the site plan should also logically not follow because of the fact that, well, I mean, the, yeah, we don't have a zoning-
I mean, you are a recommending body, so ultimately, council can approve the site plan.
Yep.
And if, again, if the zoning is modified, well, actually, they could approve the zoning either way, because you guys are the recommending body in this case.
Gosh.
Again, I mean, we wanted to be clear, I guess you have been clear that you're, you as in the planning commission are okay with the site plan, but you have these concerns about the zoning.
Gotcha.
So I don't know if I would want-
Starting off 2025 with a bang, okay.
Just one question. So let's say we take all three. The first pass is the rezoning fails, and then the site plan passes. That would be a signal to the developer that before going to council, he may need to make an amendment to his development agreement to move that along, as opposed to us trying to solve that problem here at the table, since we're just recommending it to the next body. And we have restrictions legally in what we can ask for. Personally, I have no problem with R4E. If you want to build 120-story building, I would welcome. Again, I'm 900 feet away, so.
Mr. Leonard, sorry, you wanted to-
I was just going to suggest that you, so I would, I would caution the planning commission from taking action, affirmative action on a site plan that we have measured and presented to you meets the R4E zoning, if you don't recommend R4E zoning. I don't know how you would approve that site plan if it, if it doesn't meet zoning desert. We would need more time to tell you whether or not our advice is that meets our recommendations, or if you want to sit here at the table and find another district by which it would work and go through the code to make sure that I would recommend that. So what I would advise is another alternative, is you could take action on the annexation, you could postpone action on the zoning and site plan.
Yep.
Mr. Lawfron then could continue to work with staff. He could discuss whether or not he might be interested in, in offering a conditional zoning requirement. It seems like height is the only issue that I've heard voiced. That would enable the annexation to move forward, which I think is probably going to be important for him understanding. He's probably got milestones in association with the purchase of that property that would help move that forward. But I want to be clear, then that's going to have to come back here despite the annexation recommendation.
Gotcha. I'd like to hear from the petitioner on the practicality of the suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I came in here ready to propose a conditional rezoning, so I just didn't, I don't know the process for, you know, I am a planner, but we've, we've come in saying, basically, we want to build this project. So I'm comfortable with proposing a condition in the development agreement. You know, if it's four stories and 50 feet, we would be comfortable doing that, and I don't think there's any issue from, from the owner's perspective on that as well.
Can I, so, Mr. Lawfron, I just want to make, there wouldn't be a requirement in the development agreement, a conditional zoning would actually be an affirmative offering by you that you are seeking rezoning this property to R4E with conditions. The distinction with that would be is that would be tied to any condition that you were to voluntarily offer would be tied to the zoning of the property. It would be distinct from the development agreement, or if you sold this property, it would proceed to go with that property. So if that was something you were comfortable with offering, the mechanism by which we would do it, we would actually draft a conditional zoning of a statement. It would be recorded in a similar time with the development agreement, but I want to be clear, it would be an additional document beyond the development agreement.
Yeah, we would, we would be comfortable proposing that, yes.
Okay, so if that's the case, I, I'm comfortable hearing that as a voluntary offer, but one thing, we're talking about a maximum height. I would advise that if you were going to provide a maximum height restriction as the sole condition, that you're clear that that, that is what you're provising and what that height would be. That's important for us to know. I would advise you to not propose that it is exactly what the height of your buildings are, because sometimes constructions are, yeah. So, so if, if that were, you said 50 feet?
Yes.
So I am comfortable that if we, the petitioner has clearly voluntarily offered this, we provided options by which he could consider this outside of this. If it was the desire of the planning commission, you could pass, take, consider that motion with the condition that you recommend that it be done with a conditional zoning with a maximum height limit of 50 feet as the petitioner has, has scoped. We would then work with the petitioner to make sure that that is memorialized in a conditional statement of zoning, and we would notice it at such at the city council.
Okay, got it. So effectively, what we're talking about, oh, yes. Yes.
Can I ask staff a question? Height is what I'm worried about, but are there other, it looks to me like the other differences between R2A and R are the same. They're not. It's really the height that's-
Right, it's, it's really the height.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the height.
Okay, so I'm-
They have additional setbacks beyond-
If the planning manager is comfortable that that was a voluntary offer, then I'm comfortable proceeding that in that direction, and I appreciate the developer proposing that voluntary, voluntarily offered condition.
So to be clear, then, what we would be looking for is a motion to take, oh, yeah, to, to basically amend the second motion, which is, and we could take them separately so that we can just clarify this. Let's, I'm going to start with the annex, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can I move that we recommend the annexation?
Yes, I need a second. Moved by councilmember Dish. We are in discussion of now just that one. Any discussion? Let's go to a roll call vote. And I'm just going to read it just to be clear. Ann Arbor City Planning Commission recommends that the mayor and city council approve the annexation of 255, 315, and 371 Sial Church Road and 2180 Ann Arbor-Saleen Road.
Let's call you Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitech.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Dish.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetherby.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Annexation passes.
Okay, so now we have the second one, which I need a motion to amend. So, okay, moved by Commissioner Whitech, seconded by Commissioner Mills. We are in discussion, this is with respect to, Ann Arbor City Planning Commission recommends that the mayor city council approve the address that we discussed, Ann Arbor-Saleen Road rezoning with conditions of a height restriction of 50 feet from township to R4E.
As voluntarily offered by the developer.
Thank you. Very 518er, I can't even remember the last number, but duh. Yes, oh, yes, 1,000%. Okay, so we have the motions. Planner Leonard, do you have that?
Motion to recommend rezoning to R4E with conditions, with the sole condition being a maximum height of 50 feet as offered by the petitioner.
Correct. Okay, discussion. Okay, let's go to a roll call vote. Oh, yes, yes, Whitech and then Mills.
And just to clarify, you'll be working up a formal conditional rezoning.
Yeah, between now and council, we will work with the petitioner. They will actually have to provide this, actually in writing in addition to their voluntary offering here, and then we will also memorialize it in a recorded document for the property. Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitech.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Dish.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetherby.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, and we're going to take the final motion, which has to do with the site plan and the development agreement. I need a motion, Commissioner Mills, seconded by Commissioner Wetherby. Discussion of the proposed motion. We're going to go to a vote, I'm going to read the proposed motion again. It's Ann Arbor City Planning Commission recommends that the mayor and city council approve the 255, 315, 371 Sial Church Road and 2180 Ann Arbor-Saleen Road site plan and development agreement. Mr. Leonard?
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitech.
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerschmidt.
Yes.
Commissioner Dish.
Yes.
Commissioner Mills.
Yes.
Commissioner Wetherby.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams.
Yes.
Commissioner Norton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Good luck with your support.
We appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it is 11:02. I think I need an affirmative yes to continue from people. Yes? Okay, anybody opposed? Does anybody need a break? Need a break? Okay, let's-
For the next presentation, I would, I would be grateful if you would continue to at least hear our staff present, who's been here, it'll be under 10 minutes.
Yes.
I'm totally comfortable if you'd like to postpone the remaining item.
Let's, let's go on to other business, stormwater comprehensive overview. Please, thank you for your patience. All right. The city of Ann Arbor is developing a comprehensive stormwater management plan, referring to the process of capturing and treating runoff generated by precipitation, AKA rain, implementing a variety of techniques to improve water quality and reduce the overall quantity that must be collected and treated. In light of increased frequency and severity of high precipitation storm events, the city is developing strategic plans to address the community's current and emerging stormwater needs. This plan will prioritize assessment and analysis of current techniques, building on existing successful programs, and preparing for both present and future conditions. We are leading by example, remaining dedicated to community needs. The project began in fall 2024, expected to conclude in June 2026, and we have our water quality manager, Ms. Lawson. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you all, and I actually don't mind sitting. I was supporting a staff member, Kayla Coleman, in her CIP. I sit across the hallway from her, and I'm at most of those meetings that she was talking about, so. But again, I only have a few minutes, this is very informational, no action necessary, but I did want to give the planning commission an update on our comprehensive stormwater management plan. So the city is kicking off a stormwater, it's a really long word, we call it the comp plan, to document what we've been doing really, really well for the past several decades, and memorialize and establish principles to how we manage stormwater for the next several decades to come. We are vanguards in the Great Lakes region, we recognize that we are leading by example. Oftentimes, we consider ourselves at the bleeding edge, but what we really do well is listen to our community and make sure that we're making those best decisions to manage stormwater holistically as we look at our infrastructure and resources. So our specific goals for this project, assessment and analysis, building on past successes, preparing for the future, leading by example, and dedicating ourselves to the community. So again, as I mentioned, there's a lot of things that we do really well, and we want to exist, and we want to capitalize and build on those existing programs. For example, our stormwater utility is one of nine in the state of Michigan, and many municipalities are using it as an example as they think about future stormwater planning in their own municipalities. In addition, we're also looking at how we can align several of our own stormwater principles and collaborative efforts with the A20 plan. Specifically, the A20 plan focuses on resiliency in many, many areas in the city. Where it doesn't completely align is with stormwater. There's only one mention of stormwater in the A20 plan. We're aware of that, but what we also recognize is that stormwater sort of heralds its own endeavors, and we manage it both from an asset management standpoint as well as a water quality standpoint, so from a sort of ecological benefit as well as a services-provided benefit. One of the things that we very, very strongly come, include in the way that we manage stormwater is listening to our community. Oftentimes, people think about stormwater in the arena that it floods. They see it, they know it's flooding, they see standing water, and that's oftentimes where we hear the most, but there's, I would say, so much more behind the scenes, underground. Oftentimes, we big dig holes and nobody really knows what they're for, it's to manage that stormwater so we don't see the puddle, so we don't see the standing water. Stormwater is often considered one of the more forgotten assets because it doesn't necessarily turn on when you turn the faucet on your house, or it doesn't go away when you flush your toilet. So it is sort of that third asset that we prioritize. So a few of the top-line messages that we are going to be focusing on in our comprehensive plan, as I mentioned, that we're looking at it holistically, and that's including water quality, flooding, land use development, and how development is sort of the nexus or opportunity for stormwater management into the future. Maintenance, which is often one of those things that the residents don't like to think about, but we have over 500 miles of stormwater conveyance that we have to maintain that are already existing, and that plays very, very importantly into how we manage stormwater. And I already mentioned, but we also look at stormwater management from a habitat and ecology standpoint, because it's not just the pipes in the ground, it's also the, the habitat and the environment that we're creating for the critters that do live in our community. Another top-line message is that flooding does occur, and there is no way in the world that we will be able to control flooding. We look for planning and minimizing and mitigating those outcomes. So when we say stormwater management, that does encompass floodplain management, flooding management, not flood control. I also did mention that this project is the first of its kind in the Great Lakes region. also did mention that this project is the first of its kind in the Great Lakes region. There is no other community in the Great Lakes region that has a comprehensive stormwater management plan of the caliber that we're looking at. The one that we're aware of in the nation is Boulder, Colorado. And wonderfully, and somewhat ironically, the consultant that we hired to work on our plan also wrote the Boulder Plan. And, uh, development and redevelopment are sort of key because, again, they are, they are based on opportunities. The city does not own all the land, and so there is a definite partnership with landowners, future developments and properties on how we can manage stormwater collaboratively into the next several decades. And the, the last one is, is really important. We will be having a significant stakeholder aspect to this project, but what we really want to think about is not just the people that are coming complaining and giving us input on the flooding or the water that they're seeing on their properties, but because we're going to be looking at stormwater management wholly and regionally, we're looking larger than just Joe homeowner. We're looking at really more of those opportunities that can create a better community. We're not dismissing those experiences, we're not dismissing those concerns, but this plan is meant to be citywide and communitywide. So a few timelines that I want to give to you. You won't see me in person again for probably another year and a half. It's about an 18-month project, but we will be having significant public engagement, both virtually through our soon-to-be-released engagement hub, that will be a very exciting way for our community to not just read something on the website, but actually engage with giving comment, giving input for our entire project. We are going to be having neighborhood meetings, we're going to be collaborating with watershed groups, and we also are going to have a stormwater advisory group, which is a high-level technical group that we'll be meeting six times throughout the year. And one quick plug, and Matt knows this, we will be hopefully looking at one of you to be a representative of planning commission on our stormwater advisory group, not to be decided tonight. But I, I certainly want to make sure that the planning commission does have an opportunity and a voice at the table. We also will be reaching out to the environmental commission, looking for a representative from them as well. But that technical group is going to, I'm sorry, the stormwater advisory group, as I mentioned, it's a highly technical group. We're looking at local, regional experts in both climate resiliency, stormwater management, climate adaptation strategies. And so we're going to be bringing a lot of the experts that we do have in our own backyard, but also reaching out to SEMCOG, bringing in some of their climate specialists as well. Oh, actually. And as I mentioned before, you won't be seeing me for 18 months. We're looking at project completion about June 26th. We have a lot of significant technical memos that will be available for the project team, but this is sort of the behind the scenes. We're going to be recalibrating and updating our stormwater model, which is a key engineering piece on how we manage and maintain our stormwater system. But most significantly is the timeline. As I mentioned, there's going to be stakeholder meetings throughout the process, the stormwater advisory group, and there's going to be general public meetings held in the beginning of 2026, which will be the largest, most, I'll say the, the final-ish project made available for public input and comment. But if there is a planning commission member, which I hope there is, we would look forward to meeting with you periodically throughout the project. And that was it. Quick. What I will say is this is a project that I'm really excited about, and I, I have a lot of passion for this project. This is a wonderful, exciting thing for the city of Ann Arbor and for our community.
Yeah, questions?
There may be someone else who wants to do this, and I would be totally okay with that. I was just appointed to the Michigan Water Advisory Council, which advises Eagle on water stuff, so I was gonna talk to you anyways about, because I'm supposed to be representing local government.
You're not seeing Brett's finger pointing.
So I might, I might be a candidate to be on your advisory group, but I'm also totally fine if anybody else wants to take that on. But at any rate, I'll want to chat with you as I take on that new role too.
Commissioner Mills.
I'm curious, you're coming before us, and maybe I didn't listen clearly enough at the beginning. But is this being adopted through the, like, formal comprehensive plan process? Instead, this will be like a technical resource that we refer to rather than it being noticed to our neighbors per the Planning Enabling Act? Is that right? Like?
That is absolutely correct. We chose the word comprehensive as more of a all-encompassing and holistic plan, not necessarily that it's a land use comprehensive plan. It just so happens that all of these projects are happening at the same time. So we also, I don't know if you mentioned or heard what Kayla was saying, we also have a sanitary comprehensive plan going on right now. But these are, these are much more technical plans behind the scenes, establishing how we manage our utilities.
Got it. But this one particularly, I mean, you reference what happens on private property, which is, which is within our purview. I mean, some of that stuff is stuff that we at least reference in the UDC, right? Like, what are the, the things that come out of your office effectively? So like, there is a bit of more of a nexus because it's not just what happens in the road right of way.
Yes, there is definitely a nexus, especially when you think about the UDC, because a lot of the way, a lot of the mechanisms that we use to manage stormwater are listed within the UDC for development, for private properties. And this plan is actually going to be taking those and documenting them and thinking how we can improve upon those even more.
Great. I'm excited.
Quick question for me. Are there efforts on a regional level to consolidate with like the Wasna Water County, like Water Resource Commissioners Office? Generally, what I'm thinking of, the standards being reviewed and mandated by that, the Water Resource Commissioner. So is there a kind of regional or watershed kind of effort, or is this specific to the municipality boundaries?
This plan is specific to the municipal boundaries. That being said, the city of Ann Arbor and the Wasna County Water Resource Commissioners Office have a very unique partnership, and we work hand in hand with them on so, so many stormwater projects. In fact, the waters, the Wasna County Water Resource Commissioners Office had a representative on our RFP review team. They're at the table, they're, they're part of our actual work group.
Gotcha. Are there going to be any efforts to coordinate with other cities?
Not specifically. We're looking at this as more of an example for other Great Lakes communities.
Got it. Understood. Any other questions, discussion items? Thank you so much.
Thank you much.
Yeah. Thank you for your patience as well. Okay, um, we have one last remaining item. We get to proceed? All right. All right. We're gonna move on to agenda item 10B. This is the fiscal year 25, city council policy agenda feedback. With that, we will have Mr. Leonard do the staff introduction.
Not much of an introduction. I think you discussed this previously. One of the ideas that came out of it was making sure that the city was supportive of the proposed changes to the building codes that we have to adopt, and we are not able to adopt our own. So that was one message that was reflected here. If you want to add anything else, you can. This would be forwarded to a city council or committee who will ultimately, I think, present it to the entirety of the city council to form just a bit of a policy basis. So that helps city staff when there's questions on legislation to have, know what the city's position is. Maybe we can set up testimony or something on a really quick basis if need be.
Got it. Any comments? Discussion. Okay. I guess some.
Voice vote's fine.
Okay, got it. Well, I do need a moved by Commissioner Whitech, seconded by Commissioner Mills. I'm gonna just read the motion. The Ann Arbor Planning Commission proposes these items for consideration in the city council policy agenda for fiscal year 25. Pursue Michigan Building Code modifications to enhance sustainability, housing opportunities, including adoption of Zero Code Renewable Energy Appendix. Discussion of motion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We're gonna move on to agenda item 11. This is public comment. This is a second opportunity for individuals to speak up to three minutes on any issue. We will first hear from those present and then remote participants. To speak remotely, please press 9 if on the phone or use the raise hand function in Zoom. For phone access, please call 877-853-5247 and enter meeting ID 977-6634-1226. City staff will identify callers by the last three digits of the phone number or by name if available. You'll hear an automated announcement when it's your turn to speak. And please ensure that you're in a quiet area and mute any background noise. For all participants, again, please name, please state your name and address at the beginning of the comments. Do we have any present? I do not see. There's nobody behind like the, okay. Okay. Is there, is there anybody who would like to address the commission remotely?
Not at this time.
Okay. I'm gonna give it just as per usual. With that, I will close public comment. All right. We're on to agenda item 12. Is there any commission proposed business? I just want to thank all of you for being troopers through the first meeting of 2025. So thank you. With that, we're gonna go over to our final item, which is adjournment. Moved by Commissioner, Councilmember Dish, seconded by Commissioner Weatherby. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.